Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Tom Jones, who of course is the pastor and executive director of City Rescue Mission.
Please bow your heads. Father, we thank you for this amazing day that we've been able to gather together. Lord, we remember 17 years ago, Lord, as this nation faced a tremendous challenge and tragedy, but God, we know that you've seen us through that, and we pray for each one that was directly involved, friends and family, and all those across the nation that have been impacted by this tragedy. Lord, we realize that tragedy is sometimes what makes us the strong nation that we are, and even as our city has faced tragedies, we stand here today stronger because of it. Thank you, Lord, for your blessing and favor, Lord, but we know that with your favor and blessing comes tremendous responsibility. So, God, as we gather in this chamber this morning, and this council is here for the purpose of transacting business on behalf of our city, we pray, Lord, that you would guide their minds and their tongues, but, Lord, most of all, we pray that you would guide their hearts. In Jesus's name, amen.
And Pastor, I'm sorry, Councilman Greenwell, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we have a resolution, but we also have a couple of proclamations, and I will make my way to the front to present those. Navy Days, folks, come forward. You know, sometimes you just sort of, these things sort of get scheduled when they get scheduled, and, but when I walked in this morning and saw all these uniforms, I thought, this is the 9/11 recognition that we needed this morning. So, of course, as the pastor mentioned, 17 years ago, our nation was attacked. I was, it affected all of us. I was working, though, in the U.S. Capitol at what the center of what I didn't know was a bullseye, and if not for the heroism of Flight 93, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. And these folks have answered the call that is always summoned when things like that happen. You've probably, I assume, in the Navy at the time of 9/11. Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for your incredible service, and we're grateful that you're here this morning. And we do have a proclamation, and I would ask the clerk to read.
Whereas Greater Oklahoma City is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community, whereas more than 1,000 active-duty sailors and 200 naval officers are stationed at Tinker Air Force Base to support the Tackamo mission with the Navy's E-6B aircraft, and there are 400 active-duty and reserve sailors assigned to 15 different reserve units at the Navy Operational Support Center, and 45 Navy recruiters stationed throughout Greater Oklahoma City. The United States Navy has an annual economic impact of over $100 million in the Greater Oklahoma City area, whereas the citizens of Oklahoma City take great pride in supporting our namesake submarine, the USS Oklahoma City, and the USS Oklahoma Memorial at Pearl Harbor, whereas the 13th Annual OKC Navy Days host special events and programs to express the community's support of the sailors and their families living in the Greater Oklahoma City area, whereas Admiral Greg Slavonic, Assistant Secretary of the Navy, will be honored during this year's events, whereas Oklahoma City Navy Days and Twin Hills Country Club will host the Gardner-Tannenbaum Holdings OKC Navy Golf Classic, offering a day of golf and Oklahoma City hospitality for as many as 100 active-duty sailors. Now, therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the occasion of the aforementioned events to be United States Navy Days in Oklahoma City.
For our Navy. Commodore is a great title, by the way. I think mayor's a pretty cool title, but Commodore might top it. And Commodore Michael Black, I would love if you would make a few remarks.
Mr. Mayor, thanks so much for that, and appreciate the proclamation. So, on behalf of the 1,200-plus sailors here stationed in Oklahoma, just last year, we had our 25th anniversary of relocating Strategic Communications Wing One and our fleet of 16 magnificent E-6B nuclear command and control aircraft here to Oklahoma City, and it's been fantastic. I love talking to sailors. I got some of the great sailors here with me today from all around the country, and when I talk to them, a common theme comes up when I ask them about being stationed here in Oklahoma, and they say they absolutely love it here. They love the vibrant economy, all the activities, Bricktown Downtown, all around the metro area that are here in the Oklahoma City area, and most importantly, the support of the local community for their military over at Tinker Air Force Base, which is truly Team Tinker. The Air Force Base is welcome to send with open arms, and we are happy to be stationed here. And 9/11 is definitely a truly tribute day, as your Navy-Marine Corps team along with the rest of the department is out there, 365, keeping the nation safe. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity to be here today and the proclamation.
Thank you to each of you. We appreciate your service so very much. Thank you. Let's hear it one more time. All right. Why don't we have, why don't we have Carolyn Weatherford come forward? Pending the results of this resolution, Carolyn, you might be our Employee of the Month this month. And we would love to hear a little bit more about what you do for the people of Oklahoma City, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Carolyn Weatherford has been a city employee for 15 years and is an office coordinator for the City Treasurer's Office of the Finance Department, whereas Carolyn's day-to-day responsibilities include purchasing, assisting with banking and investment activities, and being a payroll officer. Whereas Carolyn was previously a box office supervisor at the Civic Center Music Hall, performing a variety of duties, including proper cash-handling procedures, completing reports, maintaining records, and supervising the overall operation of the box office. During her time at the Civic Center, Carolyn consistently and quickly learned new developments in ticket handling and software technology. She developed professional and personal relationships with coworkers, customers, and performers, and maintained a high level of customer service. Whereas Carolyn took on extra responsibilities when her supervisor's parents became ill, handling management duties to ensure that the box office kept running as smoothly as possible. Whereas Carolyn is always eager to learn, brings a positive attitude to the office, and is an exceptional addition to any team she has been a part of in her time with Oklahoma City. Whereas the council desires to recognize Carolyn Weatherford for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Carolyn Weatherford, September 2018 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Carolyn, so how long, I'm not sure, 15 years you've been a city employee. You know, we have about 4,500 city employees, and I think there is no question they are the finest in the country, and they, that is supported by the polling that we do. You know, last month, we had the presentation that demonstrated how the citizens of Oklahoma City are most excited about their city services, more so than anybody else in the entire country, and I think it's because of you and all of your colleagues. So, that's my pitch to pass this resolution. Let's see if my lobbying worked. Would anybody like to make a motion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Let's cast our votes. Passed unanimously. You're the Employee of the Month. Congratulations. We would love for you to say a few words, Carolyn.
I just want to say that I'm very grateful and humbled that my coworkers chose me for this honor. I love working with all the city employees. I've had the opportunity, as you said, to work both Civic Center and Treasury, and I just hope that I can continue, you know, working with great people, because it is a lot of fun.
Great. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Yes, let's hear it one more time. All right. And finally, we've got some folks here to commemorate, celebrate Drive Electric Week. Where'd they go? There they are. Come on, don't be shy. You don't just raise your hand. You come up here. Is that it? You're the only one? I took a picture with 20 people. Where did all they go? Come on up here. All right. Well, we've got a proclamation here for Drive Electric Week, and maybe to know a little bit more about what that means, let's ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, known as ACOG, will host National Drive Electric Week OKC, the state's largest gathering of electric vehicle drivers, on September 8th at the Oklahoma City's Wheeler District Ferris Wheel. Whereas electricity as a transportation fuel supports the local economy through local utility taxes, the use of domestic energy sources, and cost savings to drivers and businesses. The transportation sector needs support to move toward adoption of alternative-fuel vehicles, including plug-in electric vehicles that reduces dependence on foreign oil and supports a healthy environment and economy. Whereas the City of Oklahoma City is dedicated to leadership in the use of alternative fuels, establishing policies and programs that conserve energy and promoting sustainable, including increased use of clean fuels in public and private vehicles and improved overall fuel efficiency, as stated in Plan OKC. Whereas the City of Oklahoma City has more electric vehicles in its city's fleet than any other municipality in Oklahoma, including Embark's recent purchase of the state's first all-electric bus for city transit use, and has prioritized the development of more electric-vehicle charging stations for residents. Whereas September 8th through 16th has been designated as National Drive Electric Week throughout the United States to educate citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption. Now, therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim September 8th through 16th as Drive Electric Week in Oklahoma City.
All right. Now, this is not a resolution, or else I would call upon our council member who drives an electric vehicle to make the motion, but I will call upon Mark Sweeney, the brand-new ACOG director, to talk about this.
Well, I've got a lot of people to thank, and I'm going to try to not miss anyone here. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Holt. ACOG greatly appreciates the City of Oklahoma City's leadership in advancing alternative fuels, and specifically for purposes of today, which is electric vehicles. As stated in the proclamation, the citizens of Oklahoma City should be proud of many firsts when it comes to electric vehicles. First, in the number of electric vehicles in Oklahoma Municipal Fleet, thanks in large part to City Manager Couch and city staff Jeff Tweighouse, Phil Bronson, and Marty Lawson. We'd also like to acknowledge our close partnership with Embark and COPTA, and congratulate Jason Fairbrut Rush and Embark staff, who will soon be the first transit agency in the state to deploy an all-electric transit bus. Finally, we'd like to thank T.O. Bowman from the Planning Department's Office of Sustainability, Stuart Chai, and the Traffic and Transportation Commission, the Municipal Counselor's Office, and the Oklahoma City Police Department for leadership in the state's first on-street electric-vehicle-charging-station parking ordinances, and thanks to the 900-plus Central Oklahoma EV owners that drive ACOG's Clean Air Mission every day. We really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's hear it for everybody at ACOG and everybody at the city staff that worked on it. All right. I will make my way back to the front. Now's a good time to leave. Okay. We are still on Item 3 on our agenda, the Office of the Mayor. So, you know, I took office, I don't know, maybe exactly five months ago, and one of the most time-consuming tasks is getting your arms around all of the boards and commissions appointments, and I don't, you know, I don't, our system, you don't appoint everybody just because a new mayor came in. These are just some vacancies based on the last five months, and maybe a few months before that, as Mayor Cornet let a few of the vacancies stand. So, this actually represents half, maybe, of what of the work I have to do, so I've got some more to come. And, of course, it's, you know, not everything is up to me. You know, if you look at things like CVB, there's actually some ordinances that pretty much dictate what we have to do. There's obviously some of these appointments that were based on the advice of my colleagues here on the council, but in many cases, we definitely tried to put some fresh faces and continue to make sure that the diversity of our city is represented in our decision-making process, and where I could do that, where I had the total freedom to do that, I did. And so, we have appointments here. There's probably too many names to read, but I do feel, in the interest of transparency, for those who might be listening, we've got appointments to the Board of Adjustment, Bond Advisory, Bricktown Urban Design, Civic Center Foundation, Joint Insurance Committee, MAPS III Citizens' Advisory Board, Metropolitan Library Commission, Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau, Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, Oklahoma City Game and Fish Commission, Oklahoma City Housing Authority, the Mary Gardens Foundation, the Park Commission, the Redevelopment Authority, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, the Trails Advisory Committee, the Urban Renewal Authority, Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, and Oklahoma City Zoological Trust. And according to the clerk, who stepped out, so I hope that this is true, I can take all of these in one motion.
Subject to individual consideration, yes.
Okay, very good. So, I would entertain such a thing, or discussion, or questions? Got a motion? Got a motion and a second to adopt all of the appointments from Item B all the way through Item T. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, and thank you each for working with me on some of these, and there'll be more to come. All right, moving on to Item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. We can take these Items A and B with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Councilman Cooper's actually out of the room, if you want to. Okay, passed unanimously. And then we've got requests for uncontested continuances. Mr. Couch.
Mr. Mayor, we have several starting on page 25, page 25 under 9J1, Item C, 4628, Northwest 61st Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. Moving to page 26 under Item 9K1, Item A, 4300 South Douglas. We ask that that be stricken. That's being transferred to the county. Item F, 3409 North Charter. We ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item I, 2546 Northwest 11th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item K, 3620 Northwest 15th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 736 Northeast 16th Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item O, 2325 Northwest 19th Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item S, 1806 Northwest 38th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T, 1013 Southeast 44th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to page 27, under Items 9L1, A, 4300 South Douglas. We ask that that be stricken. That's being transferred to the county. Item F, 3409 North Charter. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H, 2546 Northwest 11th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 3620 Northwest 15th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 736 Northeast 16th Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item O, 1806 Northwest 38th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item P, 1013 Southeast 44th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
We will so note, all right. Get back to the beginning. We are now on Item 6, Revocable Permits. Item A, revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation for the 2018 Oklahoma Regatta Festival, September 27th through the 30th, using portions of Regatta Park, the Eastern Basin, and the South Oklahoma River Trail. And we do have a couple folks who have signed up to speak on this item. George Caves and Sarah Betts. I don't know if you're together. You're B. Okay, we got it. We will take care of that. So, Sarah, come forward. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Bettes. My address is 2405 Northwest 163rd Street, Edmond, Oklahoma, 7301. Yeah, I'm here on behalf of the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation and our 2018 Oklahoma Regatta Festival. This is our biggest event of the year. We're going to be featuring athletes and welcoming them into the city from all over the country for rowing, kayaking, and dragon boating. We'll have fireworks that are always a big hit, pun intended, maybe, on Friday and Saturday. This year, they're Halloween-themed, leading into our Halloween weekend. This year's event will also feature a couple of fun things for our OKC Respond program, which gives the first responders of Oklahoma City an opportunity to come use our facilities, and we'll be doing some fun things for their families, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
Really crucial and important festival. I'm excited once again this year. I'll move the item.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Have a great event. And we've got Item 6B, revocable permit with the Oklahoma National Guard for the 2018 Fallen Heroes Half Marathon, September 29th, using portions of Riley Post Park and the South Oklahoma River Trail. And this is Mr. George Caves.
Morning.
Good morning. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
George Caves, 16402 East Room Avenue, Choctaw, Oklahoma, 73020. The event will take place on 29 September, start in the morning. It's a 5K, 10K, and a half marathon. It's in support of the fallen heroes that we've had out of the Oklahoma Army National Guard since September 11th. 19 soldiers in total. The monies that we earn from this event go to pay for scholarships or to a scholarship fund for the family members, especially children of the fallen heroes. Right now, the youngest is eight years old, so we still got to do this for a couple more years. So, this will be the third time we're doing it in Oklahoma City. We've done it in Norman a couple of other times, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for your service, and thank you for helping those who've given the ultimate sacrifice in response to what happened 17 years ago today. Who wants to, there's three wards implicated here. Councilman McAtee, you want to take this?
I'll move it.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Look forward to the event. Thank you. Item 6C, revocable permit with the Vietnamese-American community of OKC and metro area for the 2018 Lunar Moon Festival on September 29th in Military Park at 1200 Northwest 25th. And, oh, Michael. Michael and Thanh are here, right? Let's, we'd love to hear from you.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman.
State your name and address, by the way.
My name is Michael Doe, President of the Vietnamese Community, and I'm along here with Tuong Nguyen, also Special Event Coordinator, and also President of the Asian District Cultural Association. So, the reason we're here today, we was here last year to ask you for the revocable permit for Lunar Moon Festival, and last year was the first year, and we are very successful. We've given out over 1,000 gift for the Lunar Moon Festival for children, and also attract, how many did we have?
About 5,000.
Over 5,000 were there at Military Park. As you may know, there's a Vietnam-American memorial monuments right there, and it attracts a lot of attention, and what we want to contribute as a community to Oklahoma City and try to grow the Asian District area as well. So, there will be food trucks, there will be traditional performance, and a little Miss Vietnam pageant as well, dragon dance, and many activities, so it's really beneficial to the city as well. So, we ask for your vote, and also, we ask, please come and attend our event on September 29th between 5:00 to 10:00 o'clock.
Would you like to add something?
Pretty much set it off.
Great. Well, thank you. I've been to your event before, and it's a great community event. Councilman Shadid? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Have a great time.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We've got Item 6D, revocable permit with Yoga Fest OKC for the Yoga Fest OKC on September 14th through the 16th in Bicentennial Park, and we do have Alexis Ramsey here to...
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name and address, and go ahead.
Alexis Persico Ramsey, 722 North 4420 Road, Valiant, Oklahoma, 74764. So, thanks for having me. Yes, Yoga Fest OKC happening this weekend. So, Saturday the 15th and Sunday the 16th at Bicentennial Park Civic Center and also 21C Hotel. It's a celebration of yoga in this community, and really for small-business owners and all the yoga studios in this town. We'll be having meditation, art. We will have music. We will have food trucks. And really, it's free to come onto the park and shop. We'll have a marketplace, and then ticketed items are inside and on the lawn for classes.
Great.
Yes. Please come join us.
Not because of your expertise in yoga, but because of your neighboring ward. Would you like to pinch-hit on a motion here, Councilman Cooper? All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we're at 6E, revocable permit with the Oklahoma City County Health Department for the 2018 Open Streets on October 7th, using portions of Riley Post Park, Matt Hoffman Action Sports Park, Manuel Perez Park, 1700 South Robinson. And it looks like we have Billy Walton. Hi.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your time this morning. I am here with OKC Open Streets, and this is the south edition of the festival. We will close down 15th Street, all the way down to 29th Street, and what we're doing is opening up these streets that are normally used for automobiles, and opening up for people to walk up and down, get active, bicycle, skateboard, whatever they do to stay active and stay in shape. We'll be having food trucks out. We'll be having also vendors out, over 40 or 50 vendors, that their only price of admission is to think of a creative physical activity for our participants, our attendees, to actually do while they're out walking the streets, enjoying the south side of Oklahoma City. This will be on October 7th, from 1:00 to 5:00. We'll actually close down the street from 11:00 till 7:00, so set up and tear down and making sure everybody's safe as we do that.
Great. And, you know, you're actually kind of speaking on ENF, which ones for the parks and ones for the street. Let's see. Who do we want to go with here? Ward, Ward 4, you want to take this?
Oh, absolutely. Great event. I've attended it there before, and didn't realize how steep that hill is as you're walking north until you start walking on it, but I would move for approval.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes for Item E. And then, Councilman Cooper, you want to take Item F?
Yes.
It's the, it's the, it's the street part of the same event. Okay. Got a motion and a second? Did I have a second? All right. We'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. All right. Now, we've got Item 6G, revocable right-of-way use permit with AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City, to hold the AIDS Walk of OKC in 5K Red Run, September 23rd, South Klein Avenue, between Southwest 2nd and Southwest 3rd. And, Brian?
Yes.
I can't read your last name. If you would mind stating your name and address.
Brian Rousey, 4400 Hemingway Drive, Oklahoma City, 73118.
Okay. Well, tell us about the event.
Well, we're having our 19th walk, and this is, I believe, our ninth run. It takes place at the Farmer's Market. Race starts at 10:00, walk starts at 2:00, and... And our organization, basically, we raise funds to support other nonprofits who provide HIV and AIDS support services, or education, or direct care.
Great, okay. Councilman Cooper, you want to pinch hit here again as well, being the neighboring ward?
Well, just for the record, I tell Meg all the time that she has all of the best events in her particular ward, and this is certainly one that we need to be aware of and can really benefit all of our city, and so I move the item.
All right, got a motion and a second. Seeing any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thanks, have a great event, thanks for all you do. All right, 6H, revocable right-of-way use permit with Capitol Hill Main Street to hold Fiesta de las Americas on September 29th, on Southwest 25th, between South Robinson and South Hudson. And we've got Donna Cervantes, please step forward, and if you wouldn't mind stating your address as well, just for the record.
Good morning, Donna Cervantes, 319 Southwest 25th Street.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, this is our 13th annual Fiesta de las Americas. This is held each year during Hispanic Heritage Month. It recognizes all the multicultural activities and organizations, and our students, and brings out an opportunity for people to show off the dances, music, food, that represents so many in our community. It's open to everyone, it's family-friendly, it starts with the beautiful Parade of the Americas, and we're so happy to have so many organizations participate in that. It's free, and this will be Saturday, September 29th, it continues throughout the day with food, performances, entertainment, and vendors, so we hope everyone attends.
Great, thank you. Councilman Stone?
Just to echo that a little bit, I'm not, I wouldn't consider myself a big parade guy, but I've been to this parade, and it is an excellent parade, we had a blast there, so I certainly move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, 6I, revocable right-of-way use permit with JDRF International to hold the JDRF One Walk on September 30th, Mickey Mantle Drive between Reno and Sheridan. We've got Summer?
Code A.
All right, very good. State your name and address.
Summer Code A, address 2004 West Decatur in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, 74011. I am here representing JDRF. We are holding our JDRF One Walk on September 30th, on a Sunday afternoon, at the Chick Saw Brick Town Ballpark. It is one of our largest fundraisers of the year. It's just a fun-filled celebration of our families and, that live with type 1 diabetes. You can walk it with a team, a school team, we have a lot of businesses, some college teams that participate to raise money for type 1 diabetes. We are the largest non-governmental-funded organization that funds type 1 diabetes, type 1 diabetes research. We will set up in the morning, our registration opens at 1:00. We have worked with Lieutenant George to try to figure out the best route for our Walk that doesn't affect a lot of businesses, so we have just asked to close Mickey Mantle for Reno to Sheridan from about 1:45 to 4:00, 4:30 at the latest, to keep from inconveniencing a lot of people, and then the Walk route, so we should be in and out of there by 4:30, 5:00 o'clock.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and Councilman Cooper?
Move the item.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event.
Thank you.
Now we are at 6J, revocable right-of-way use permit with Plaza District Association to hold the Plaza District Festival on September 29th on 16th between Indiana and Blackwelder, and we've got Selena Skorman here to discuss that. Come on forward, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Selena Skorman, and I'm at 1749 Northwest 12th, 73106. And I'm here on behalf of the Plaza District Association and the Plaza Business Alliance, and I'm going to ask them to wave, but I'm accompanied by Joel Parks, our Program Assistant at the Plaza, and Leah Roper, our Festival Co-Chair. It is the 20th anniversary of our Plaza District Festival, hard to believe, and it is going to be Saturday, September 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We're really excited, we've got a very exciting program for you guys this year. It's going to be 33 local artists, 34 local bands on three stages outdoor, and our headlining band is Adam and Kizzy. This festival is in celebration of the revitalization of the Plaza District, and we are, we're also going to have a robust kids' area, so we'll get your kids nice and tuckered out, and then making cupcakes and birdhouses, zumba, but it's a celebration of all things local, local art, local music, and of course, our local Plaza District. But I just wanted to thank the City of Oklahoma City for their continued support of this event, and the district itself. Because of your support, we're able to maintain the Plaza District as a thriving cultural district for an entire community to enjoy, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Move for adoption.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second. Seeing any discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Selena. Based on this agenda, the last weekend of this month will be the busiest weekend in Oklahoma City history, so I, I pledge to do my part to ensure good weather, that's what the mayor does. So, item 6K, revocable right-of-way use permit with the University of Oklahoma Health Sciences Center to hold the Outpaced Cancer Race on September 15th on Northeast 10th, between Lincoln and Stonewall, and we have Ashley Watts.
Good morning, Ashley Watts, my address is 1630 Northwest 15th, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106. The Stevenson Cancer Center is really excited to host our first annual Outpaced Cancer Race, with the proceeds benefiting cancer research and important patient services at the Cancer Center. After receiving our NCI designation this last year in May, we're very excited to be able to host this signature event, and be able to support local research, and over 40% of our patients come from more than 50 miles away, so we're very excited to help support gas cards and hotel stays while they're receiving cancer treatment. We are anticipating over 1,000 attendees, we were shooting for 750, so we've kind of blown that out of the water, and we're very excited. The course will start and finish at the Stevenson Cancer Center with a post-race block party of sorts behind the Harold Hamm Diabetes Center with kids' activities. The big friendly beer truck will be around for the adults to enjoy, and then lots of great prizes and announcements for our winners.
Great. Councilman Cooper, for adoption?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And finally, 6L, revocable right-of-way use permit with VI Marketing and Branding to hold Carnadeum on October 26th on Park Avenue between Broadway and Robinson, and we've got Robbie Rapola?
Yes, sir.
Hey.
Robbie Rapola, 125 Park Avenue, Suite 200, in Oklahoma City, 73102. This is our 16th year doing the Carnadeum for the United Way of Oklahoma. Last year we raised just under $10,000. We closed down Park Avenue on October 26th this year, between Broadway and Robinson, have a band, and over 20 restaurants that come out to compete with chili cook-off, and then also about 40 to 45 amateur chilis that are out there. So we feed a pretty good portion in downtown and raise it all the money that goes to a good cause.
Great.
Move the item.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Anything you can do on weather that day?
Chili. All right, we will now, that completes item 6. We will now recess our council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A and B, and I would entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second to pass the items as a group. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and we will convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have three items here, and I would entertain a motion.
Revocable.
We've got a motion and a second to take the items as a group. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we only have claims and payroll, but we're going to probably vote on it anyways, so. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and reconvene as the City Council, where we find ourselves at item 7, the Consent Docket. And I know we already have for sure a few presentations, but are there any items that council members would like to pull out for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I need to pull out on 7BO5. I have a conflict of interest, I need a separate vote.
Oh, okay, okay, so let me make sure I get that. 7BO5. Five. All right, we'll handle that at the appropriate time. You can stay now, though, we'll do, yeah, I'll give you plenty of notice. Okay, anything else anybody wants to pull out for discussion? If not?
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
Okay, so that's a motion for all the items except for the one that Councilman Cooper just asked for a separate vote.
Mayor, we do have three presentations this morning. One on item Q, which is on some street art, the second is on items BA and BB, which relates to the Heartland Project in downtown Oklahoma City. And the third one is item BF, which is a budget amendment, but as a budget amendment, we're putting money aside or making our contribution to the American Indian Cultural Center. We do have a brief presentation on the, what's happening over at the American Indian Cultural Center.
Okay, well, we'll take those presentations in order, then we'll have a vote on all the items except for the one you've pulled out, then we'll have that vote, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to leave. So, we will go with item 7Q, presentation on that public art commission agreement.
Shannon Enz is here this morning from our planning department to talk to us about, again, something we've never done before.
Good morning, I'm Shannon Enz with the Planning Department, I manage the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative. We have a few staff members here, Robbie Kinsel and Jennifer Sylvester. We also have Jessica and Gray Thompson from the Classen-Tinpin Neighborhood Association. And the reason this morning that I am presenting this and not Robbie, because usually for art projects you get to visit with Robbie for a little while, is because I manage the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, and this is funded through the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, and it's a special, unique project, it's a neighborhood-led project, neighborhood-requested project. Better?
I don't know.
Okay, so, the beautiful rendering you see, the mural you see in the top of this page is not one of the intersection murals, it is a mural that's completed at McKinley Park, it was done by Amanda Zoe and Tessa Ravens. This was another Strong Neighborhoods Initiative project that the Classen-Tinpin Neighborhood Association requested. I think you'll see in a minute when we show you renderings of the three new intersection murals that are proposed. They all reflect some of the similar colors, the vibrancy of the neighborhood, the connectivity between the different cultures, and diversity in the neighborhoods, so I wanted to point that out to you, that this is a kind of a continuation that I think is lovely and attractive, and truly does reflect the vibrancy and liveliness of Classen-Tinpin. So the purpose of these intersection murals, and murals in general, are typically community building tools. They help create an identity for a neighborhood, they represent the local community and kind of the flavor of the neighborhood. These particular intersection murals were chosen due to their visibility and the proximity to the Plaza District, Eugene Field Elementary School, and McKinley Park. Hopefully, they maybe have an impact on traffic speeds in the neighborhood. Hopefully, everyone that goes near them will be awestruck and slow down, and want to see them for a little while. And you can see similar intersection murals in Denver, Seattle, Portland, you know, our peer cities, Fort Lauderdale, Milwaukee, Minneapolis. This is a one-year pilot project, I'm going to make sure we specify that, that we do have funds set in escrow right now, $4,000 for removal, if something needs to be removed, if they don't last, or if there's something wrong with them. There are funds set aside that were provided through a grant, a different grant, that will remove the murals if needed.
So it's not presumed they will have to be removed, as you're saying?
No.
If it's?
That's correct. The only intersections that were considered are residential neighborhood streets. These are not arterials, these are not at lighted intersections, these are little, they have stop signs, they're small neighborhood streets. So only the driving area will be painted, not the crosswalk or the curb, the sidewalks, and only latex paints with some kind of grit additive are allowed. The timeline on this is, we started this two years ago. Part of the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative program is that we have a particular grant program, it's for projects that are, we provide a little pot of money for the neighborhood associations that are in SNI neighborhoods to apply for a small amount of money to do a particular special project they want to see implemented. The mural on the front page of this presentation was that, was part of that, part of that project, part of that program, I should say. And in 2016, Classen-Tinpin applied for a neighborhood grant that had several different items on it. And what we tried to do with that program is encourage capacity building within the neighborhood association. It teaches them how to write grants, it teaches them how to work together and build a special project for the neighborhood. And so they did that, they did, it was a great job. It has taken us this long for several reasons. One is, when we review applications, we don't just approve them right off the bat because the neighborhood wants them. We can't do that. So we have to vet them thoroughly, we have to talk to the different departments, we talk more with the neighborhood association about what their goals are, and some things they requested originally, we were not able to approve, so we had to go back and look at some similar projects. So, about November of last year, we started talking with Public Works again, and started talking about different projects they presented to us. In October of 2017, they were, the neighborhood association sent out a call to artists for anyone who wanted to, you know, submit an application for the intersections and submit a piece of art. In January, the Classen-Tinpin Committee for the, for the arts projects convened, and that was Kelsey Carper, Kayla Lewis, and Ronya O'Connor, and they approved these, approved these pieces of art. And thankfully, in March, Oklahoma City Arts Commission evaluated the projects and recommended approval as well. These are the locations, if you're familiar, so this is just to the east of Classen, so that's McKinley Park, the north, the far west is Northwest 12th and Indiana. This one is just outside, a block outside of the SNI boundary for Classen-Tinpin, so that one is not paid for with SNI or CDVG funds, that is paid for through a grant the neighborhood is able to obtain, through the Mid-America Art Alliance. So the other two on the right are funded through CDVG and SNI, as well as the other grant. As you can see, they're adjacent to Eugene Field, McKinley Park, and just two blocks north of here is the Plaza District. This is the first mural, Talavera Azul. As you can see, this is a very vibrant and colorful intersection mural, it's meant to resemble a Mexican tile. And Cassie Stover, the artist, she has two murals in this series, and they're both 20 by 20, they're both going to cost $7,000. They both have birds and butterflies and beautiful artwork in them that she says, again, reflects the vibrancy and colorful and joy of the neighborhood. The second one is Talavera Rojo, also by Cassie Stover, and this is at Northwest 12th and Indiana, this is the one that's right outside of the SNI boundary, just a block. And this one is paid for totally from the funds for the Mid-America Art Alliance. The third is called Clasp, it's done by the artist known as The Holy Kids, it's at Northwest 12th and McKinley. Just to the west of it is McKinley Park. It's 26 by 43, it's a little bit larger than the other two, it's also going to cost $7,000, and there's a little difference there in the, the source of funds. CDVG is going to pay for $5,700, the Mid-America Art Alliance is going to pay for $1,300. So the next steps are, within 30 days of today's agreement signed, the neighborhood association, the artists, will work together to obtain administrative revocable permits from the city engineer. They'll work together to get the work order permit with the site map and traffic control plan, and they will, as soon as those things are obtained in our office, we'll provide them with a notice proceed, and they can begin the work. Any questions?
How many days does it take to paint them?
It won't take more than a couple weeks, probably more than a couple days, but a couple weeks. That's what we're estimating.
Then you can drive on it immediately?
I, that's a good question, maybe Robbie wants to answer that, but I would say it's probably, probably want to wait a couple days. Yeah.
Thank you. So do you, you said a couple weeks for painting?
It won't take that long, I'm just saying, depending on weather, once they get their permit, it may take them a couple weeks to find the perfect few days to get in there. They'll have traffic cones, they'll block the intersection.
Yeah, that was my question, how long is traffic shut down?
Sure, they'll, they'll have to provide all that information in order to get their work order permit, so I don't have all that right now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? I think this is fantastic, and I think we need more and more and more and more of this, and in crosswalks and arterials, and I'm not afraid to say that.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that.
From my perspective, keep it going. Okay.
Appreciate that.
Your Honor, yes, just, just a different perspective, though.
Of course.
I'd like to see as much art throughout the city as possible, so this is a little bit different, but we have had his, history of putting in decorative bricks in certain arterial intersections, and that's not been received all that well by people in the community, they just felt like, why would we spend money on that? What I'd like to encourage is, you know, getting more art throughout the community, but perhaps not on the street, and look for opportunities to put art throughout the city that's a little bit more visible, just a different perspective.
Okay.
So, I'm not against this, I'm just saying, I'd love to see this art in a different presentation, so that it's easier to see. I mean, I think the examples you gave are beautiful, very vivid and colorful, I like them, I just hate to see them on the streets, get them up, you know, to where people could view them easier.
How about, how about both places?
Well, yeah, and you know what, I would even suggest, if you don't have a building or some wall to paint these items on, construct an attractive wall, and that becomes the background for the mural.
Well, it's funny you mention that.
Oh.
We actually are working on, working with Classen-Tinpin Neighborhood Association, one of the very first meetings I had with them five and a half years ago was about the renovations to the park that are underway right now, McKinley Park. And they have a new stage, and at that very first meeting, they talked about having a stage with a background on it, which this one has now, that's just recently been constructed. And so, one of the items that'll probably take us about a year to get to you with a contract will be, hopefully, a mosaic or some type of artwork on the back of that stage there at McKinley Park.
You know, if you had the proper amount of area, you could have a wall constructed and have a similar mural almost as a reflection onto the street, or as if the street was reflecting onto the wall, have a combination of the two. Anyway, I'm wasting everyone's time.
I'll also be bringing to you, the fourth project of this series is our bike racks, and they will be placed at McKinley Park as well, that will probably be on your next council agenda. Those are also pieces of art.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
All right, now we've got a presentation on BA and BB.
BA and BE, BA and BB is two allocations for the Heartland project. The first is a million-dollar gold project, which is to help bring the jobs to Oklahoma City. They have a presence in the Oklahoma City metro area, and this is bringing another unit in that is not from Oklahoma City. And then, item BB is a TIF allocation to get the project redeveloped on Broadway between Fifth and Sixth Street. This morning, we have Lance Hafner and Andy Burnett to talk to us about the project.
All right, great, thank you. Your Honor, council members, we're happy to be here this morning. Andy Burnett, our developer, I am Lance Hafner, Vice President of Human Resources, and we have some colleagues with us in the back for moral support, so we're happy that you're giving us the time to tell you about Heartland. So, let's get started. Right click, left click, there we go, okay. So, I'm going to give you a timeline, our roots, and where we are present day and why we're here with you. Heartland was founded in 1997 in Princeton, New Jersey. We were first a payments and gift card company, so we process payments and gift cards, so when you would go as a consumer to a merchant and you would swipe your card, we process that transaction for the merchant. Today, uh-oh, sorry, today, we are the fifth-largest payment processor in the United States, or the ninth-largest payroll processor in the United States, but we're not just a processing company, that was our, our beginning and the genesis of us, but today, we lay technology solutions on top of that, and we have additional products aside from just taking the payment and processing that. Those products include point-of-sale, so the actual hardware or the software that allows the point-of-sale to happen at the merchant, additional products on top of payroll like human resources. We have customer engagement and analytics, so if you've ever been to a Panera or Starbucks and you see the apps that people pay with, that's a customer engagement or analytics tool, and it allows the merchant to actually engage with the customer and provide them information, like come in today, 20% off for a Coke during their, their low-volume times, those types of things. And then, we have a lending product as well, so we can provide the merchants, for which we're providing software technologies, payments or payroll solutions, we can provide them funds to capitalize their business on top of that. Our customer base are small to medium enterprises, up to large enterprises across the United States, but really, our roots and today continue to be those small mom-and-pops to the medium size. So, think of a small, micro food truck vendor that you'll see at Blue Garden, or think of the t-shirt shop that you can walk across from Blue Garden that's selling t-shirts, and you go in and you swipe, those are merchants to which we provide services to. Our mantra is entrepreneurs respectfully serving entrepreneurs, so we have an entrepreneurial spirit about us, and our customer focus and our customer base are hence entrepreneurs. And then, our ethos is care-focused and quality, so everything we do, we try to frame it in care, focused and quality. So, a little bit about the corporate entity and who we are with them. So, we're owned by Global Payments, an Atlanta-based company, and like its name suggests, we operate globally in virtually every continent except Africa and Antarctica, so Europe, South America, North America, including the United States and Canada, Asia and Australia. $24 billion enterprise value, and we're actually over $18 billion in market cap today based on our closed price of our stock yesterday. Revenue for this year is on a run rate to exceed $4 billion. In 2016, Heartland and Global merged, so the fifth and fifth-largest payment processors merged to become the fifth-largest payment processors, because our competitors are much larger. Just as I noted, our headquarters in Atlanta, and we have multiple sister companies, business units throughout Global, so it's not just Heartland, we have others that we operate with, and we sell their products as well, for that matter. A little more about Heartland, so we're headquartered here in Oklahoma City, the Oklahoma City Metro, excuse me, and that's been true for about the past one and a half years since Global purchased or the merger with Heartland and Global occurred. We have our president located here, our chief sales officer, multiple leaders, but then multiple others from entry level up to additional senior leadership. We have zero space in our two current buildings to expand, which is one of the reasons we're here today, and we've acquired temporary space off Quell Springs-Hertz Parkway to hold us until our new building is erected. About 160 of us in the Oklahoma City metro area today. So, why are we here today? We want to expand, and we want to further our presence here as a headquarters. We have a Nate Love for Oklahoma City, multiple of us have our roots here, born and bred here, and we want to see this company grow and establish a much large and long presence for the Oklahoma City metro area. We will be located at Fifth and Broadway, that's the intent, actually, it is, we've, we've obtained the land, and our developer here will tell you more about that. And we'll sit right in front of the streetcar, so our employees and visitors coming into the building will have access to the streetcar to go to restaurants and venues and events downtown. I think it's also important for you to know that the incentives were instrumental to us selecting Oklahoma City as our headquarters location. So, these are other areas in which we operate, Cleveland, Ohio, which is our largest payroll operation, Jeffersonville, Indiana, where we have with Global about 800 employees who support our operations, Atlanta, Georgia, the global headquarters, and Plano, Texas, where a large contingency of IT employees sit today. So, the idea is not that we would have closed shop here in the metro, but the idea is that the additional jobs, I'll tell you about in just a moment, would have been located in a variety of those locations, so, and I can tell you today that the business case that we presented to executive leadership to approve the build of our headquarters includes the incentives from both Oklahoma City and the state. So, a bit about our effect on the metro area, which is the exciting part. We expect to hire jobs, we don't expect, we are hiring, today we have requisitions posted, and we'll hire in the, in the areas of IT, payroll operations, business support, business intelligence, which is exciting, sales, marketing, additional leadership, administration, gamut of jobs. Average fifth-year wage would be $55,000, which we think is a strong wage, and that will be comprised of entry-level positions up to leadership roles. And we forecast that we'll hire 345 in the next five years, taking us to a total of 500 in the Oklahoma City metro area. So, as any good company, we believe that we should be stewards of the community in which we operate, and that we should get back to the community. So, we want to tell you a bit about our civic involvement and philanthropy. First, employees can donate up to four hours of their time a year that the company pays for to charity services. When we're fully staffed at 500, that's tantamount or equal to one full-time employee that Heartland's providing, this community and philanthropy. And that's just the company's sanction programs, we also allow employees to donate their time. In addition to that, it just wouldn't necessarily be paid, this is a company-paid program. We have an annual match program for philanthropy, up to $500 a year will, will match for nonprofits. And then, annual drives, which we coordinate within the company, for Toys for Tots, school supply drives, food drives, and more. We want to show you pictures, just to validate that we actually are spirit of community and giving. So, this is us at Positive Tomorrow's with our intern program, the first one for Heartland this year. We felt that it was important that our interns understand that a good steward of the community, a good corporate steward provides to the community. So, we took them and we allow, we helped them move their furniture back into the classrooms for their first day of school. This is us at the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma, and then, this is us at Feed the Children, where the entire Edmund office went, including our president and chief sales officer to give back. So, that concludes my part, I'll turn that over to Andy to tell you a bit about the development.
Good morning, Andy Burnett, I live at 600 Northwest 14th, Oklahoma City, 73103. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. A little bit about my company, we've developed a bunch of buildings downtown, one of the most comparable, we bought the vacant Middiqui Building in Bricktown, we converted it to the headquarters for Tapstone Energy, they brought over 150 new jobs, high-paying jobs to Bricktown. This was a beautiful vacant shopping mall in the middle of downtown that I bought called the Century Center, we converted it to the headquarters for the Daily Oklahoman, moved them back from the suburbs back downtown, the Mahogany YMCA, Cafe 7, and St. Anthony's headquartered this building, it's been a fun little project. Other projects that we've done, the Steel Yard with Gary Brooks, finishing up the West Village on the west side of downtown Oklahoma City. We've got a lot of projects that we're doing in downtown, we're bullish on downtown. I got a phone call maybe two years ago from a friend of mine about Heartland, that told me that they were out of space and that they were looking to move, and that there was a chance they were going to move out of town, out of the state. I actually knew the president of the company, I called Tony and said, hey, let's, let's, let's think about this, what other options could there be? That, that started the conversation of trying to convince them not only to stay in Oklahoma City, but to bring a whole bunch of new jobs here. Was introduced to Ray Shepard, who is sitting in the back here. Ray is the Global's Director of Corporate Real Estate. Ray came in town and started helping us evaluate a bunch of different sites. We looked at sites all over the town, from the suburbs, Edmund, downtown, you name it. One of the big, big catalysts for this site, Fifth and Broadway, two things, number one, the streetcar, streetcar was a big thing for them, they loved everything about the streetcar, the fact that their employees could jump on the streetcar, be downtown, they've got a ton of visitors to their corporate headquarters, and so, anybody staying in a hotel at the new convention center or wherever they're going to end up staying can jump on the streetcar and get to their site. That was really exciting to them, as was, maybe even more so, was this parking garage in the back of this picture. This parking garage is almost 100% vacant today, and as anybody knows, finding access to parking in downtown Oklahoma City is both difficult and expensive, and we were able to, this parking garage is owned by the YMCA, we've worked out a, a good lease with the YMCA that we're excited about at below-market rates, because, again, they had a vacant parking garage, and so, that was a win for them, and it was a win for us. So, that garage has 550 spots, which can more than seat everybody that we're hoping to bring to this site. What you're looking at there, you're looking from the west to east, to your right is Fifth Street, to your left is Sixth Street. This is the building that we've designed, Rand Elliott is the architect, Stan Lingo's the general contractor. It will have a seven, it's a seven-story building, retail on the first floor, it's actually 111,513 square feet, and it actually can hold 600 people, is what we're hoping. We initially designed it with 500 in mind, and now we think we can get up to 600 in the building, which is good, because we're hoping that Global will continue to grow. We actually designed this block, you can see it to the left here, just barely, we also own this lot here to the north, that front Sixth Street, we designed this where we can, we can develop that lot for an expansion for Global, should they end up growing as much as they think they will grow. I don't want to make overpromises here, but they, they envision doing a lot more than, I think, what they're telling us today. Again, we really tried to have a new urbanism design in mind, we've got retail on the first floor, we'll have a small, hopeful coffee shop, ice cream parlor here, and as you move further south is where we envision a restaurant. We've already gotten a couple of LOIs on that restaurant space, but we, we want to be picky and try to find a good, a good tenant. Another look of the building, I'm moving backwards, sorry. Again, you can see the building here, you saw the light rail tracks there. This is from, looking from the north to the south, we've got a little cantilever boardroom here, you see the parking garage, and that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments for either person?
How many, what, what is the level of incentives from the state?
The state's offered us 8.5 million over 10 years.
That's through quality jobs?
Quality jobs for rebates.
Okay, so, you have a, you have a market cap of $20 billion?
Market cap approaching 20, enterprise value over...
You have 8.5 million from the state, so this deal doesn't happen without 1 million from the city, well, total of 3.3.
So, one of the things that Ray beat into my skull for about a year was occupancy costs, something that was really, really important to them was occupancy costs. They hit us and hit us and hit us about reducing their occupancy costs, and so, one of the things that we're trying to do today, a couple of the other cities that they were looking at had offered them incentive packages to help them offset occupancy costs, to incentivize them to move the jobs, and so, that was, that was this tool, the million dollars and the TIF, will all be obviously passed through to the tenant to try to bring their occupancy costs down.
Okay, and so, the threshold is about 11 million, 8.5 million wouldn't do it, but 11 million would. That, that would get your occupancy cost to a level that it's feasible to do.
So, I can, as being involved in the forecasting and the modeling, I can tell you that the business case was very tight for us, so every penny counted in the case, and I think Ray could, could also vouch for that as well. So, a million is substantial to us, 8.5 million is substantial, any dollar that the city or the state is willing to give us to bring jobs here, we're, we're willing to take and do.
Just a different perspective, I think this is a great investment by both the state of Oklahoma and the city of Oklahoma City. We need companies like yours to begin to grow and develop the downtown area, especially away from what's considered the central business district. Pull it out, let it continue to grow, and continue to work to fill up those empty spaces, so, you know, we get focused on traditional manufacturing and other types of jobs, but certainly, the future is these types of employers, and I certainly welcome you, and good luck, and we hope one day to convince your parent to relocate from Atlanta to Oklahoma City.
I think OKC Talk said that, didn't they?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think OKC Talk said we're moving to Global. I think OKC Talk said we're moving global. That's a joke.
This also helps to diversify our economy. It is a sector that we need to have more growth in.
Well, if you take it just one step further, excuse me. The proximity to the Innovation District and a more advanced type of employer, it just helps in so many different ways. And again, I'm glad you chose Oklahoma City, and we hope you can tell your competitors and other business contacts to do the same. Thank you.
Councilman McAtee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a comment, question, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong. What we're doing today is just authorizing your group to sit down and negotiate the incentive package. So we're not doing any exchange of money today. This will come back before the council at a later date for your approval. And the contract has been agreed to, to this point, it will be a performance-based contract. And if the jobs are not created, there'll be no incentives paid. And so you'll have an opportunity to see the details of this sometime in the future when it comes back for your approval.
Well said. Okay. Any other questions, comments on this item? All right, well, see you then. Feel free to have a seat. And thank you for your investment in Oklahoma City. This is an exciting project, both from a development perspective and a jobs perspective. Okay, that brings us to BF. This is in regards to...
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment, but specifically, I think we're going to hear the most about American Indian Cultural Center.
Exactly. Craig Freeman is here to kick us off.
So I'll give you an overview of the budget amendment, the couple of items that are within the budget amendment. It does include a portion that's for funding, to set the budget authority in for funding for the American Indian Cultural Center. And then I'll introduce the presentation on the American Indian Cultural Center after that. The item that you have before you today is introducing the budget amendment. It'll set the public hearing for September the 25th. There are several items on here that we're doing. One of them is the purchase order rollover. It's just an administrative process that at the end of the fiscal year, not all purchase orders that are in place have closed out. Mostly, it's because the goods and services that were ordered at that time have not been received. And so they carry over into the next fiscal year. Everything doesn't finish out cleanly on a fiscal year. And what we do every year is come back with a purchase order rollover, a budget amendment, just to move those purchase orders into the next year. The total amount of that portion of the budget amendment is 2.782 million. The next item is the Bass Pro lease payment. It involves a Bass Pro lease payment. Bass Pro Project was approved in 2002. With that, we internally borrowed from different funds about $17.2 million, and the plan was to repay that over multiple years, partly from the lease with Bass Pro, since we constructed the building and owned the building, the lease from Bass Pro, as well as the sales taxes generated from the economic development in that area. All of that has been repaid. This budget amendment will allow us to transfer these funds, now it'll be received in the general fund, transfer these funds to the Economic Development Trust as a part of the funding plan for the Convention Center Hotel bonds. Those bonds are being sold today. We'd introduced the plan, it was adopted by council in July of 2017. Part of that plan was that, you remember, we had multiple sources of revenues that would go towards this project in repaying the bonds, and the Bass Pro lease was one of those. So this just puts the budget amendment in the general fund. It's a net zero in the general fund. The lease payments will come into the general fund this year, and then the payment will be made to the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. The final amendment is for the Capital Improvements Fund, and that's $7.5 million. We had $1.5 million already in the Capital Improvements Fund from the end of fiscal year 18. In the general fund, we were able to transfer the remainder of the amount that was needed for the $9 million commitment that the city has made. A council first actually made that $9 million commitment to the American Indian Cultural Center in 2012 with a resolution committing to put $9 million towards the completion of the construction of the American Indian Cultural Center Museum. In 2016, in March of 2016, the council approved in agreement with the state of Oklahoma that confirmed that commitment within that contract that we would put forward this money. This sets the budget authority in place that will allow us to make that payment to the state of Oklahoma, go into the completion fund and be used for that purpose. The state is also committed to selling $25 million in bonds toward the project. They'll close on those bonds October the 3rd, the scheduled date for closing. The American Indian Cultural Center Foundation has committed to raising at least $31 million, and I know they're working to raise additional funds. They've contributed $16 million towards the completion fund. So with our funds in, along with the state and what was committed by the foundation, there's $50 million there. They're working to raise the additional funds that will get us to the $65 million initial budget, and then working also to try to raise additional funds beyond that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the budget amendment before I introduce the presentation on the American Indian Cultural Center. So if there are no questions, today we have Tom Wilson with us from ADG. ADG is serving a role for the Native American Culture and Educational Authority for the construction of the American Indian Cultural Center, similar to what they do for us for MAPS III projects. So Tom Wilson will be here and talk about the construction of the project. And then James Pepper Henry, who is the executive director of the museum, is here, and he will introduce the project, the presentation, introduce Tom, and then give us a vision that they have for the American Indian Cultural Center.
My name is Jim Pepper Henry. I'm the executive director of the American Indian Cultural Center Museum. I'm a member of the Kauan Nation of Oklahoma and also the Muskogee Creek Nation, and I'm at 113 Northwest 13th Street here in Oklahoma City. It's my privilege to introduce Tom Wilson of ADG Architects, who is helping us manage the development of the project. And Tom is going to give us an update on the project budget and timeline.
Good morning to you all. My name is Tom Wilson, 920 West Main Street. As mentioned, I work with ADG as an architectural and engineering firm. And as Craig said, much as we do on the MAPS programs, we're providing program management services to the cultural center. As many of you know, the cultural center began in earnest almost 20 years ago. Let's see if I can move this forward. The team that was assembled back then, 20 years ago, is still the same team that is together today, and we're very fortunate that that is the case. Johnson Fain is the lead architect on the project. They are from Los Angeles, California. They've done such projects as the Opus One Winery, 21st Century Fox Headquarters in California, and the AnGen Biotechnical Campus there as well. They are joined by a local firm from Edmund, Hornbeak Blatt. You'll know some of their projects, the Oklahomian Community Foundation, the repurposing of the Ford Manufacturing Facility into 21C Hotel. And they have worked for you all in the Master Kids Programs on several different projects. We're fortunate to have as our lead exhibit designer Ralph Applebaum and Associates out of New York. They're certainly one, if not the premier exhibit designer, I think, in the world. They've recently completed the National Museum of African-American History and Culture in Washington, DC. The World War I Memorial in Kansas City. The United States Holocaust Museum, again, in Washington, DC. And a project in Anchorage, Alaska, for the Anchorage Museum, the Arctic Study Center. When that project was accomplished, the newly appointed museum director was our own Jim Pepper Henry. So there is some history between Mr. Henry and Ralph Applebaum and Associates. A relative newcomer to the team is Storyline Studio. Current advances in museum design include intergenerational spaces for children and kids of all ages. And this is a specialty of Storyline. They're out of Seattle, Washington, and they've joined us here just in the last six months on the project. And then the last member of the design and construction team is our construction manager, Centennial Builders. This is a joint venture between Flynnco and Manhattan Construction Companies. They were the team that was responsible for building the, completing the dome on the Oklahoma Capitol. Other projects that they have done are the US Visitor Center at the US Capitol in Washington, DC, the BLK Center, AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, Texas, the Chesapeake Arena in the Savin Memorial Museum of Natural History in Norman. The funds available for the project currently are $65 million, and this shows you a distribution of those funds. Clearly, the focus is on completing, the construction of the building itself. That leaves $5.5 million for the exhibit selection and installation. There's $3.4 million for equipping the facility, and we're maintaining contingency at this time of $2 million. Schedule is a little difficult to read, but essentially, we have solicited bids for a portion of the completion of the project already. We expect to start construction in November of this year. The balance of the work will be bid in November and December, and we'll start construction on the balance of the project in January of next year. The completion is a 20-month completion schedule, and we anticipate that occurring in September of 2020. There'll be a period of commissioning to allow the building to off-gas and acclimate before we bring in the collections that will represent the exhibits on the project. That will take about three months, and we are anticipating a grand opening in late spring of 2021. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Of the approximate $50 million of additional cost to complete the museum, is, can you give me an idea as to how much of that is, is costs pertaining to aspects that never have been worked on? Or is there any cost associated with the 50 million related to deterioration that has occurred due to the delays in the completion of the project?
It's an excellent question. The entire project, 170,000 square feet, has been enclosed and conditioned, with the exception of the Hall of the People, which represents about 8,000 square feet of that 170,000. There is some deterioration of the paint finish on that, but it's a pretty minor cost compared to the entire project. The entire rest of the project is heated and climate-controlled, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry. Mr. Henry. Pepper Henry. I'll get that eventually, Jim.
Well, thanks for having us here this morning. And I want to walk you through the facility real quick so you get an idea of where we're at and where we're headed with the design of the building. This is a slide that gives you a little bit of an orientation of the site, and this is the view from Interstate 40. A lot of people drive by this every single day and wonder what this building is, and this is the site that most of our citizens see every day. And we couldn't be at a better location. We are literally at the crossroads of America, the intersection of Interstates 35, 235, 40, and I-44 is not too far away. And we're also, we're also catty-corner to the Boathouse District, and so perfect place for more development in this particular area. Trying to get the slides to work correctly here. This is a view looking from the east to the west. There's a lot of symbolism that goes into the design of this building. Before the arrival of Europeans, there were great civilizations in this part of the country. In fact, Oklahoma is home to the remnants of one of the greatest civilizations in North America, Spiro Mounds. And so part of the design incorporates a large mound feature. This is an homage to the great civilizations that were here before us. And then the steel part of the building there, that represents our modern society. So there's an intersection of the ancient and the new in the design of the building. And I'm going to give you a little walkthrough of each part of the building here. This is how the building is laid out. I'm going to start with the promontory mound and the Hall of the People. Probably the most prominent feature, aside from the mound, is the structure of the Hall of the People. This is a large gathering space. This is our grand entry into the museum. The structure of the Hall of the People is reminiscent of a Wichita grass house. The Wichitas are the indigenous peoples here in Oklahoma, at least one of the tribes that are indigenous. And then we have the promontory mound, which you'll actually be able to walk on. And this is the entrance to the facility. This is called our east gate. There are 100,000 stones as part of this entryway. This stone was quarried in southeast Oklahoma. This is called Musquebec Stone. And these 100,000 stones that are in the design of this entryway represent the 100,000 people that were relocated to Oklahoma in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. This is the interior of the Hall of the People. This is going to be a great venue for events, programming during the day. We'll be able to rent this facility out in the evening time. So it's going to be one of the great venues here in Oklahoma City to gather. Here's the frame structure of the Hall of the People. We're going to start construction again this fall, start to order the glass. This will all be clad in glass. That'll be one of the first things that you'll see happen with the cultural center once we start construction again. And there are 10 support structures in the design of the Hall of the People. Those 10 structures, support structures, represent the 10 miles a day that tribes, tribal members were marched to Oklahoma from various locations around the country. There's a grand courtyard between the mound and the Hall of the People. We call this the Courtyard of Nations. This is a great space for events, for powwows, concerts, for festivals. We can get several thousand people in this particular location. This is the promontory mound that I mentioned that you can walk up to. And once you hit the apex of the promontory mound, you have the most incredible view of downtown Oklahoma City. The architects did an incredible job of designing this, so on the summer solstice, the sun sets perfectly at the apex of the mound as you're standing inside of the building. And here's a shot of downtown Oklahoma City from the promontory mound. If you recall, a few months ago, we had the super-blue blood moon eclipse. Well, all of us on staff got up early that morning, went to the top of the mound, and we, this is not photoshopped, that's an actual picture of downtown Oklahoma City with the super-blue blood moon eclipsing. This is the south part of the building. This is where all of our major exhibits will be. And of course, our cultural center is here to tell the story of the 39 tribes that are here in Oklahoma, the collective history of those tribes, the circumstances that brought those tribes here to Oklahoma. Many of our tribes have our own cultural centers and museums throughout the state. We're not trying to replace those cultural centers or tell the individual stories of each tribe in Oklahoma, but we're trying to tell the circumstances and the history of those tribes and how they were brought to Oklahoma and where the tribes are today. This is a layout of that South Wing Gallery. This is what we call the Oklahoma Gallery, using the Choctaw word, Oklahoma meaning red people. And of course, it is a tragic story of removal of the tribes coming to Oklahoma, but of course, we're not focusing particularly on that tragic story. We're going to show how the tribes have overcome and persevered some of the circumstances that they faced coming to Oklahoma and where they are today. I wanted to show this map of the United States and show where the 39 tribes have come from. At one point in time, there were over 60 tribes that were relocated from around the country, around North America, to Oklahoma. And a lot of people don't realize that what happened in the late part of the 19th century and early 20th centuries, this is the equivalent of moving every single nation in Europe to a place the size of England in terms of culture and language and diversity of cultural life ways. ways. And of course, after the tribes were relocated to Oklahoma, many of our children were taken from our families for four generations and sent to government-run boarding schools. And despite all of this, our Oklahoma Native Americans have the highest rate of service in our military. One out of every 10 American Indians here in Oklahoma serve in our military as opposed to one in every 100 people in our general population. And so, there, we will certainly honor our Native American veterans in the cultural center. We have a section on military service and warrior culture in the exhibition space. I'm excited to talk about the Smithsonian Exhibition that is coming to the cultural center. I used to be the Associate Director of the Smithsonian National Museum of the American Indian, and while I was there, as the project was being developed back in 2006, I wrote a loan agreement to loan over 140 objects from the Smithsonian Institution to the cultural center. These are objects that were taken from the tribes in Oklahoma around 1909 and 1910 and have been at the Smithsonian for over 100 years, and we're bringing those objects back to Oklahoma. And these objects will be representative of all 39 tribes in Oklahoma. As was mentioned, I used to be the Executive Director of the Anchorage Museum in Anchorage, Alaska, and we developed the Smithsonian Arctic Studies Center where we borrowed collections from the Smithsonian for an unprecedented, unprecedented period of time of seven years. In this particular case, the Smithsonian is going to loan these objects back to us, back to Oklahoma for a period of 10 years, which has never been done before. And here is a shot, I look much younger in this picture, and this was from 2006 when we signed the loan agreement to bring those collections from the Smithsonian Institution to Oklahoma, to the cultural center. And now, it's ironic that I am the Director of the cultural center and actually facilitating this loan that I wrote so many years ago. I wanted to give you an example of how important these objects are coming back to Oklahoma. These objects that we've selected, we know who the makers are of these objects, and we know the descendants of the people that made these. So this is going to be a homecoming to our people here in Oklahoma, and I don't know if there's a laser pointer on here, oops, if there's a laser pointer on here or not, but, I want to go back to that picture. There's a gentleman, second from the right in the front row, and his name is Mahouji, and this is a picture of a Ka delegation to Washington, D.C. in 1909, and that gentleman is wearing an otter collar. Well, we found that otter collar at the Smithsonian, and we're bringing that object back. So we have historic photographs of many of these objects, of the people who used them, that will complement the objects that we're bringing back for display. So it's going to be very exciting for our tribal members and for our citizens in Oklahoma to see these objects after 100 years. This is the Smithsonian Cultural Resources Center for the National Museum of the American Indian in Sutland, Maryland. This is where those objects are being stored right now. I sent a team of my curators out to Washington, D.C. to select those objects that are at this particular storage facility, and they've done an incredible job of selecting these objects to come back to Oklahoma for an extended period of time. Here's an example of some of the items that are at that facility, that are coming back to Oklahoma. This is the north wing of the facility. This is where we have our family discovery center and also our community gallery. A little bit about the community gallery, it's, it's about 1,000 square feet. We'll be able to focus on our local artists, our great American Indian artists that are here in Oklahoma, group shows, shows for our students. And as Tom mentioned, we're working with Storyline Studios out of Seattle, Washington, to help develop our children's discovery space. And I'm happy to say that this part of the facility, the children's space, as well as some of the other amenities I'm going to talk about in a minute, are going to be free to the public. So we want to completely eliminate the threshold to get people to come to the facility. We're expecting over 40,000 schoolkids a year to come to the cultural center, and our visitorship, we're looking at close to 300,000 visitors a year coming to visit our facility, and we want to make sure that our citizens here in Oklahoma City have free, unfettered access to elements of our cultural center. Here, this is the east wing of the facility. This is where most of the visitor amenities will be. This is also free to the public. We're going to have a full-service restaurant, a cafe bar, coffee bar and café, a museum store, and a multipurpose theater for live events, concerts, film festivals, and so forth. I'm going to walk you through this real quick. This is the layout of that east wing of the facility. We made a decision to create a much larger kitchen than we had before in the original design and a full-service restaurant, understanding that there's opportunities to generate revenue at this facility with enterprises by renting out the facility for events and weddings and so forth. And so, we've upgraded the kitchen. This is the forum area inside that east wing. This is where a lot of our live demonstrations and activities will occur. It'll be a great venue for after-hours as well, for different kinds of events. This is our gift shop. Prior to coming back to Oklahoma, I was the Director of the Herd Museum, which is one of the great American Indian museums in the, in the United States, and we had one of the most incredible museum gift shops at the Herd Museum showcasing one-of-a-kind handmade native items. And in that gift shop, we generated over $5.5 million in sales, and many of the artists that are represented in that shop are from Oklahoma, and so, we've made some upgrades to our gift shop to showcase our Native American artists that are here in Oklahoma. This is a rendering of the coffee bar that we're planning for the cultural center. I'm very excited about our restaurant, and last night at Stella, a restaurant just down the street from here, there was a woman chef named Loretta Barrett-Odin, who's one of our great American Indian chefs in the United States. She's an Emmy Award-winning chef, and she is helping us develop a menu for our restaurant. And last night, she previewed some of her menu items that we may have at the cultural center. But when I was at the National Museum of the American Indian, we developed a restaurant that focused on Native American-themed cuisine. And here in Oklahoma, food sovereignty is a huge part of what the tribes are trying to do today. There are three bison herds that are run by the tribes here in Oklahoma. A lot of the tribes are growing their own food, and so, there's that farm-to-table concept. I call it rez-to-table here in Oklahoma, getting American, traditional American Indian foods on the menu at the cultural center. There won't be a restaurant anywhere in the state that's like this, showcasing American Indian cuisine. This is a rendering of what the restaurant may look like when we're done, and so, it'll be great to showcase our native foods, but also for after-hour events as well at the facility. We're going to have an outdoor café area as well as part of that restaurant. I wanted to mention that, of course, we have a lot of great amenities at the, at the cultural center that we're developing, but there's no substitute for meeting real-life American Indians, and our programming is very important to us, and so, we're developing a robust program. One of the things we'd like to develop is an international American Indian arts and culture festival. Some of you have been to Santa Fe, to the, to the Santa Fe Indian Market. That's the largest Indian market in the country. Again, many of those artists are from Oklahoma. We developed an Indian art market at the Herd Museum. It was a two-day festival. In those two days, we had 600 American Indian artists. In two days, we generated $16 million in sales. I think we can do something similar on that scale right here in Oklahoma City, showcasing our great American Indian artists, as well as the, the different cultures of the 39 tribes here in Oklahoma. And again, with the 39 tribes that we have here, we have incredible living cultures, and I'm practicing what I, what I preach. I'm the, I'm the gentleman in the middle there with the purple shirt, and we're hoping to have all kinds of great live activities at the cultural center with all the 39 tribes. And so, that's a quick overview of the cultural center. We're going to start construction again this fall and winter, and I encourage the city council to come for a hard hat tour once we get going again, and we'll, I'll walk you through the entire facility, and you can see what we're doing. Any questions about what we're doing at the cultural center?
Just to comment, it's, the only disappointment is that we have to wait, you know, almost two and a half years before it opens, but it really looks very exciting, and let us know how we can continue to be of assistance. I'm wondering if the city could somehow do a project to duplicate the Hall of People, the wooden structure aspect, maybe a pedestrian bridge crossing the river to help tie in Bricktown or downtown Oklahoma City easier to your facility, or something along those lines, maybe something bigger would be great. It's a great story, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, very exciting project. All right, well, that concludes our presentations, correct? So, is there any other item that anyone wishes to speak about or pull out for separate vote? We already have the one request. Okay, so, we had a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve all items under item 7 except for 7B05. 7B05, we are not voting on that at this moment. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and then, we'll pause for a moment. I would entertain a motion for item 7B05. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the concurrence docket, which is item 8, and we've got items A through N, which I believe we can take on one motion. Did we have a motion and a second down there? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item 9. Items requiring separate votes. We begin with 9A, ordinance on final hearing. This is recommended for approval. It's at 3175 North Portland Avenue, moving from C3 to PUD 1684. Councilman Shadie.
Did anyone sign up to speak? This had unanimous planning commission approval, no protest. I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at 9B1, amendment to ordinance to include easement reservations for utility Is this in regards to 9B2, the ordinance on final hearing, closing and vacating a portion of southwest Third Street between Robinson and E.K. Gaylord? So we'll need, we'll need a motion on both the amendment and then on the ordinance, correct? Okay. Got a motion and second on the amendment for 9B1. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then, we've got 9B2.
We need another vote.
Oh, we do? Okay. On which one?
They want the emergency.
They want the emergency, okay. All right, so an emergency requires seven?
Seven.
All right, okay. But we didn't need that on B1?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll pause for a moment.
I mean, we can go ahead.
You want to go on?
The ordinance as amended, and then the emergency separate.
The emergency is separate vote anyways? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and do the, the ordinance, so that's 9B2. I would entertain a motion on that item. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And can we just come back if we need? Okay, we'll move on and we'll come back. All right, now, we're at 9C. This is the third of three steps. How far down does this relate to streetcars?
Well, actually, the first one's on the streetcar, the second one is on scooters, and then the next four are on streetcars.
Okay, all right, so we'll start, obviously, we're just on 9C then. This is the third of three steps, so this is actually the
Yes.
...final hearing and passage of this new ordinance related to streetcar. We heard a presentation on this a couple meetings ago. We had our hearing last meeting. Is there any discussion, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for passage. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9D. So this is the public hearing on the scooter and bicycle-sharing ordinance, and this could take a bit, so this is the second. Actually, let's go back real quick. Councilman Cooper, thank you. We're going to go back to 9B2. This is an emergency vote on the ordinance that we just approved, and it requires seven, and so, I would entertain a motion on 9B2, emergency.
What's the reason for the emergency?
To assist in the closing of the property with Omni.
What's that?
To assist with the closing of the property with Omni. This is between the Omni Hotel and the convention center and the, and the parking garage and a new development in the convention center.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second? Yeah, sorry. And any discussion? Councilman Shadie? No. Amanda, did you say something?
Yes, I believe there may have been some confusion. The original ordinance, when it was passed, did have a request for emergency, but the amended ordinance does not have an emergency included, so there's no need to vote on an emergency for this matter.
Okay. So, that's not necessary?
Correct.
Correct? Well, we could withdraw the motion then, if that's appropriate. I don't, we don't need to run around passing
That's correct.
...unnecessary emergencies.
That's correct.
So who, who made the motion?
I, I'm busy.
All right, you were recorded as having made it. Would you withdraw your motion? Okay, thank you. Moving on. That was a train wreck. All right, moving on. Now, we're at 9D. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance previously discussed. I do think we have some folks here to talk about this. Somebody from Lime and from Bird. Lime happens to be on top, so we'll start with Rob Greenleaf.
Hi, Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Rob Greenleaf. I'm originally from San Jose, California, 144 South Third Street, but currently staying at the Hyatt Place. So, we've been honored to have, have served Oklahoma City for the past two weeks with our fleet of scooters, and in the last two, in the last, in the last two weeks, even with those two days of crazy rain, our fleet of scooters have been ridden over 8,000 times, and we're very excited to grow our fleet moving forward. Generally, we support the legislation proposed by the city staff, but we do have a few concerns with the legislation that we'd like to bring up today. The maximum fleet of 250 scooters and a phase increase of 25 scooters per allotment is insufficient, not only to meet our commitments to your local businesses who've signed up to be Lime hubs and the community, but it also will lead to a system that fails to meet even the community's lowest expectations. We would like to propose that you allow us to increase our fleet by 100 or more scooters per week, as long as we are showing that more than three trips per scooter per day is happening. We have seen strong and steady ridership already in Oklahoma City, and we look forward to the opportunity to meet the demand for our community for inexpensive, environmentally-friendly transportation services. While we understand the process that led to the utilization of a revocable permit for initial deployment locations, we do not support the integrating, we do not support integrating this into the citywide permit moving forward. In nearly every other city in the country, and we're in over 80 cities currently, a permit from the city, as is envisioned in the proposal, allows dock-free mobility providers with Lime to deploy our scooters anywhere within the public right-of-way, as long as it meets the standards for safety deployment or for safe deployment set by the city, things like sidewalk width and not blocking ADA access. This flexibility allows us to meet demand where we see it, and if we see a number of people trying to rent scooters in a certain area but fail to do so because there isn't supply there, we would be able to expand or relocate to meet that demand. For example, certain locations that have signed up are slower during the day but busier at night, and deploying scooters at those locations may not make sense, whereas deploying them at night for use there do make sense. And so, if we see a number of, likewise, if scooters are not being used at a certain deployment area, we can move them to a higher-demand part of town regardless of whether we have a secondary revocable permit. While we will continue to partner with local businesses through our Lime Hub program, we do not believe that we should be required to deploy scooters only at designated locations, and instead should be able to adjust them to meet demand like all of other, like all other businesses. Of course, if a location we've deployed to turns out to be a problem for the local business, we will gladly move those scooters to another location where they do make sense, and we can do this within an hour of them sending in a request to have them moved. We do have a number of other small concerns around required responsible, response times and data protection, but are mostly meant to align Oklahoma City's regulations with broader national guidelines and allow us to match our Oklahoma City operational and data plans with what we do everywhere else. We look forward to continuing to serve Oklahoma City. We look forward to continuing to serve Oklahoma City for a long time yet to come, but key to this is allowing Lime to meet the demand here on the ground, both in terms of numbers of scooters on the streets and the locations where we can deploy them. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, it's like we do. We've got some clicks. Councilman Stone?
So that, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So the ordinance keeps you from moving to where the demand is, is that right? Or the revocable permit says this location only.
This location is in front of this business that has agreed to allow us to put the scooters there, but that literally means that we would have to deploy them there at seven, by seven AM in the morning. But in some cases, maybe there's a street festival or other locations that are busier during that time. We would like to be able to place them in these locations, of course, as long as we're making sure they're not blocking ADA or, you know, inappropriately placed in those locations.
So, and I guess maybe my next question would be for staff probably, which is, what about the Oklahoma City Marathon? What about the number of festivals that we approved today where you would think we would want to deploy, we'd want to see this stuff deployed
I don't think
...for our citizens?
I don't think you can use the scooters at the marathon.
I guess I'm not going to run again this year then, because I was convinced I could win, but...
This is new technology that's coming in, and we're trying to deal with this a little bit, and we haven't really run up with that yet. We'd be willing to work to see if there's a way we can work around that specific. A couple of things I want to point out too that I think are important is, one, having the approval of adjacent property owners, I think, is an important process out there. I think that's the respect that we want to show to our property owners as we go forward, that they approve and sign off on it. Now, maybe we can work out something in conjunction with other special permits. I don't know, but I don't think we want to just not have any type of reasonable controls on that as we start. But secondly, it also sets a precedent for use of the right-of-way. And if we don't, if they can do anything they want in the right-of-way, that really sets a precedent for others to do whatever they want in the right-of-way and gives up what I believe is the precedent for control of, protection of the right-of-way for all of our citizens. So that being said, that doesn't mean that we aren't willing to work with them and come up with a way to deal with these during other special events, if that's the major concern that's out there.
So let me see if I can frame the issue correctly. And Kenny, I want to put you on notice, I might state some legal principles here, so that may or may not be correct. So, I mean, property owners, this was stated at the last meeting, I think, own their property essentially to the center of the street typically. Now, they don't, people don't think that way because they don't really have much control. Obviously, the, the use of the street is so intense that they've long since forgotten about the fact that they own to the center of the street, but they actually own to the center of the street. And we have a public easement for public purposes, not just in the middle of the street, but also several feet into their front yard perhaps, or in the case of downtown, the sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, to the building line. And we then are entrusted by the people of Oklahoma City to exercise our discretion to let others use that public easement that is actually the private property of the building owner or the homeowner.
Right.
Yeah, and so we go through that process. Now, so, and that's the concept behind why we have revocable permits currently being required for Bird and Lime and why we would be proposing to, to put that into the permanent ordinance for this. The contention by Bird and Lime is that that's not a process that they're following in any other city, that the other cities have sort of given more of a, sort of a floating permit to Bird and Lime to operate and, and place their scooters in the public right-of-way subject to maybe a complaint. So it becomes kind of permission rather than, I'm sorry, forgiveness rather than permission in those other cities, whereas we're approaching it currently, propose to approach it with a permission rather than forgiveness approach. Does this, does this sound good, what I'm saying so far?
Yes. I do have a comment. One, there are only a few cities that have rules and regulations on this out there. Just say we're an outlier at this time, I don't think it's fair.
Okay.
Because there aren't that many that do that. There are at least one city, I mean, they're doing it different ways. Some, some have not had many regulations, some have not come up with regulations, some have contracted with one vendor specifically, and some of them do have some regulations, not called revocable permit, but some other licenser controls that they, they put on. So there's a little bit of everything out there. To say there's a best practice on this at this point in time, I think we'd all agree is that there isn't a best practice on this at this point in time.
Give me any idea how many, and maybe Laura, how many top fifty cities have passed an ordinance on this topic?
So I, I know that Dallas and Nashville have passed ordinances. Memphis has an operating agreement with one vendor, it's my understanding. Other cities, like Santa Monica, is looking into a limited licensing. They did an RFP, I believe, and are evaluating and scoring companies. Many of the cities that they're operating in do not have agreements yet, so there's, it's, it is all over the board.
So less than five cities have met, top fifty cities have passed ordinances that address this one way or the other?
That's what I'm aware of in my research. I mean, it's, it's every, every day, something changes, so...
Do you know about Austin, Texas?
I don't know specifically off the top of my head about Austin. I do know in Austin, you're allowed to ride them on the sidewalk, and you're not allowed here. So that's what I know about Austin.
Okay.
Well, we can make, you can make an argument that if this is related to public transportation and the city could permit it without the approval of the vetting landowner. However, the landowners potentially could object to it, that they own to the center of the right-of-way and you essentially have, have authorized a business use
Right.
...of their property. And it's not just, it's not, it's not really a public transportation that the city itself is undertaking.
Right. What's, what's another example analogy of a commercial purpose that we might give someone a permit to engage in on the sidewalk?
So tables, restaurant with tables up front would be an example of that.
Okay, but that's, but that's the property owners seeking it.
Yes.
Where is it where we farm out that easement to some third party that...
I'm not aware of that.
For commercial purpose.
Not aware of that.
Festivals. Could be commercial.
Yeah.
Usually aren't, but could be. Okay.
Arts festivals.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to also maybe see if there are any comments or questions regarding the, the weekly cap. One concern we have is that, you know, right now, most of our scooters are concentrated in the busier areas of downtown, Bricktown, Midtown, and all the locations we've seen them at. But with that cap, we're not able to properly service the wider areas outside of this sort of general circle where you do see our scooters. And the whole goal is to provide transportation to everybody, not just the, say, tourist community or the folks that live in, again, Midtown, Bricktown, Paso Alto Plaza. Oklahoma is a very spread out city, Oklahoma City is a very spread out city, and we'd like to be able to service the other neighborhoods. Like recently, we were able to service and get permission from Class and Curve, and we've deployed our scooters there. But there are many other shopping malls and centers and communities that we're not able to service with the two hundred and fifty current scooter count that we have and the, I guess it's twenty-five weekly additional scooters based on three trips a day. So depending on what the council thinks, we'd like to ask to potentially see that raised to maybe something like a hundred a week, so long as we are proving and showing that these scooters are getting more than three rides a day, and currently they are getting an average of four to five a day. And that's just within, again, this very remote area that we are deploying them in.
Mayor.
I just, I just wanted to say, I continue to get, while I'm in favor of the scooters, I continue to get a lot of citizen complaints about safety and almost being run over by scooters and all of the things that are of concern. And I think, you know, just some additional, you know, warning to, to those who are renting, I think, needs to happen just as, as we have more and more scooters, and that's kind of what you're looking for, is that just being aware of pedestrians who are moving about the city. And I continue to get complaints, even this morning, from an elderly couple who were at the Myriad on yesterday and was almost run over by a scooter. And so I just think it just needs to be reiterated, continuous concern for safety.
One thing that we can and continue to do, to do is to make sure that the riders, as they open up the app and, you know, rent these vehicles, that they're not supposed to be riding them on the sidewalk. It is clearly stated that, you know, they should ride them with a helmet, recommended, but also on the road. And also regarding the cap, it wouldn't be to flood the same area with even more scooters. It would be to distribute them more evenly across all the different wards, areas of the city. So rather than putting even more scooters in a downtown area, it would allow for us to really put pockets of scooters like Class and Curve and other similar mall areas and neighborhoods so that, again, it won't necessarily flood these areas with even more scooters, but evenly distribute them. And regarding the safety concern, there are things that we can do
To share.
...to notify the users and to police them from our end, but also potentially maybe receiving help from law enforcement officials who happen to be on the sidewalk patrolling if they notice somebody on the sidewalk, to let them know they should not be riding these on the sidewalk. It's the same reason you can't ride a bike on the sidewalk, you should ride them on the streets, is the same reason why you shouldn't be riding these scooters on the sidewalk as well. But if there's anything we can do to, to make that a better experience for everybody, we definitely are more than happy to comply and do what we can to notify the scooter riders what they should and shouldn't be doing.
Councilman Greenleaf, you had?
Yeah, two questions or comments. One, how long does it take to issue a revocable permit, assuming you wanted to expand into new locations? Any idea?
Well, we've been putting a lot of staff effort on trying to get these first level of, of permits out there, and so it really depends on our staff time based upon the demand that we have. So if we have five scooter companies and they're putting hundreds of, of locations to us, it's going to take a little bit longer. I think, I hope you, you believe that we've been pretty responsive.
No, definitely been really responsive. We, you know, flooded Eric Wagner's office with like fifty requests right off the bat, and that did take a while, but on the average, it might take a couple of days.
Okay.
That was one of the other concerns is as we try to expand, we may not be able to reach the deeper parts of Oklahoma City just because the Department of Public Works has a lot of other things going on.
Yeah.
And if we have the ability to place them and properly place them in places where you think they make sense, that would take the stress off of the DPW as opposed to us coming to them with ten, twenty locations a week.
Yeah, I, I would just have a preference, and I'm thinking more in terms of as you expand out into the suburban areas, that you do have to get a, a permit first and that that would require permission of the property owner at the time that you submit that request for the permit, or that the property owner, if, if that wasn't obtained, would have some recourse to have the vehicles removed if, if they felt like it was creating a problem. But I could envision, you know, placing these in certain locations like, again, in Ward Five, Early Wine's YMCA, or the Parks, or the Library in, in Ward Five, or shopping centers. And people would perceive that as a very convenient addition to that location, and, and you'd see a, a lot of activity. I'm not convinced it's a safe means of transportation, but I'm just saying there's a demand out there. So I like the idea of requiring a, a, a permit before you begin expanding into the suburbs and let the property owner provide that, actively provide that permission with the ability to revoke that if they feel like at some point it became more of a nuisance. And then secondly, you've indicated you'd like to have an additional one hundred vehicles per week added. What do you foresee your, your, your total maximum amount of scooters?
That I can't really say, but currently, most cities have seven hundred and fifty to a thousand servicing the area. Just the two fifty we have alone is pretty much maxed out within this
Yeah.
...Bridgetown to Paso Alto Plaza. So this would allow for us to get out to the outer sides of Oklahoma City.
Right, and we have six hundred and twenty-two square miles to absorb these scooters in, so that, if you look at it as a whole, doesn't seem to be a problem. And I don't know if we should have this concern, but there's an issue of competition, and one company dominating the market. Should we limit that ability or should, which, if we do, that provides opportunity for other companies to come in and compete more effectively and perhaps in certain areas if, if one company doesn't dominate the whole city? I'm not saying that's an issue that we should be concerned with or that we should even consider handing out franchises to one company over the other. I, I just raise that concern. If we let one company dominate, it will certainly hurt the ability for other companies to enter the market. And when you ever do that, you limit competition, and I think in some ways you impact service.
Councilman Shadie? So I, I spent Labor Day weekend with my three teenage children in Austin, Texas, and I have to say that the most fun we had was on Lime scooters. But there were, I had some interesting observations. I mean, number one, you had both Lime and Bird there. Lime completely dominated the market there. I mean, ninety-five percent of the people were riding Lime scooters, and the Bird scooters were just sitting there. Lime scooters are bigger, they're faster, they're just, they're a superior product in my and my teenage children's opinion. But with that, they, they were all over the sidewalks. And I mean, is it legal to ride in Austin on the sidewalks?
I do not believe so.
It is legal?
I do not believe that it is.
Oh, it's not? Well...
But I can't speak to Austin.
But empirically, I mean, in terms of what's happening in the real world, they're all over the sidewalks. And I watched, to Lee's point, I watched near miss after near miss after near miss, and these things are traveling twenty miles an hour. I mean, they're, and they're big. They're bigger than the Bird ones. They have mass, so mass and speed is, is more forced. And so with that, now you have lawyers advertising Austin about if you've been hit, if you've been injured by these scooters. So it's all, so the litigation is now coming. So it's like, it's a guarantee that you're going to have injuries, you're going to have wrecks, you're going to have, I mean, when you, when you sign up, it does say, wear a helmet. Nobody had a helmet. It says you have to be eighteen. I mean, I have to admit, I broke that rule. I mean, there are all kinds of kids on these things. And so what, what would you say to that? I mean, and just in term, I mean, you can, you can put on the app whatever you want. Helmet, you have to be eighteen, you can't ride on the sidewalks, but that's clearly not happening.
So one of the things that we are doing aside from the messaging in the app is also restricting not only for, there, there are certain areas where you can't ride a scooter based on the city's request, so we can geofence those areas so the scooter will stop and not prevent you, slow down, of course, but not prevent you, not allow you to go into those areas. In Oklahoma City currently at night, we are slowing our scooters down to ten miles an hour just for safety reasons. During the day, they can only go up to fifteen. So although in some cities you may have experienced scooters going twenty, which is the max, eighteen, twenty, specifically in Oklahoma City, it's fifteen during the day, ten at night, and that's starting to be ruled out in most cities just for safety concerns, especially the night side of things. As far as, again, customers, if you see them riding scooters on the sidewalk, that's one thing, but if you do see scooters on the sidewalk scattered, that's because they're leaving them there after they've picked them up from the approved locations and then ending their trip, and rather than parking on the street. They're parking it hopefully nicely and cleanly on the sidewalk, but if that's what you were mentioning, then that's what you're probably saying.
So they would park it next to whatever business they went into? But, so when you, when you sign off, you're supposed to take a picture of it
Mm-hmm.
...to make sure that you're parking it appropriately. What do you, what do you do with those pictures?
So those pictures are currently being reviewed by us, and we will probably be releasing an app that will either park and put inside the, the Lime app, but it's something that we're looking at potentially calling it parked or not. The idea of being judging and rating scooters, and eventually, I'm sure that data will be somehow penalizing scooter renters for not properly parking their scooters, just like if we noticed that, you know, a certain renter is throwing our scooters in the river the first time we might, or somehow damaging it or somehow putting it up in a tree, eventually that same user will be banned from our, our app just to prevent damage to our scooters in the same way, most likely down the road, offenders that are not properly parking scooters down the road, offenders that are not properly parking scooters, or properly taking photos of their scooters to prove that they're parking them properly, will be penalized or eventually not able to use the app. Because obviously, it does cause a problem if customers are parking their scooters in inappropriate places or blocking sidewalks. Now, we do have the ability to, within 30 minutes to an hour, come by a location if a business owner calls us, letting us know. Like this morning, I received an email from a customer service about scooters being inappropriately parked. Apparently, somebody had parked them in a way that wasn't appropriate. So within about 45 minutes, I had one of my guys come and rebalance them and put them where they're supposed to be. But in this case, it was a customer or customers that left those scooters in front of their business in a way that they shouldn't have. Our guys know where to park them and do so every morning properly.
Well, I do have to say, I mean, it tremendously adds to the vibrancy of downtown, and it is a transportation mode. And watching the tremendous popularity, I mean, I was thinking the whole weekend, a cap makes no sense. I mean, it just makes no sense. I mean, the free market would determine where these, and trying to put a cap, it wouldn't be working like it is there. So it just doesn't, I don't think it would even work in downtown, much less trying to get out to other...
We've had multiple private property owners ask, like Class and Curve, who wanted 40 scooters on their property, as well as at Trader Joe's, Pops, and Whole Foods. That takes 40 scooters away, or 40-plus scooters away from downtown, because we're not putting them there. And based on ridership, we do readjust. Sometimes, maybe you only see two scooters popping up in front of that cafe because they're not getting as much ridership versus this other place gets five. And because of the popularity of business owners wanting to have our scooters, 250 is really thinning the scooters out from places like Plaza and Passo now, because we're seeing more ridership or more requests for Lime hubs in downtown or Bricktown or Deep Duce area and so on. So that's why we'd like to raise the cap to be able to service all of the other places that are now noticing these scooters, seeing them on the news, and asking for us to come to their part of the city or to their business.
By the way, as far as we're concerned, you can put as many scooters as you want in front of Trader Joe's.
In front of Trader Joe's? Okay, you got it.
It's in Nichols Hills.
Okay. So yeah, the second day, I got a call from the property owner asking us if we were actually putting them there. And we said yes, but the problem is, they're disappearing within an hour. I was deploying them at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM, they're gone. So by the time the person drives by to check it out, they're already gone. And they're spread out throughout Nichols Hills. So of course, we then take scooters from somewhere else, bring them there, put them in that spot again, and they're gone. So having more scooters will allow for us to properly service the areas where they're more popular, but also keep other areas where potentially they're not as popular, just because of pedestrian traffic, but at least allow for them to have two or three scooters every day instead of taking away from the slower areas and putting them in the busier areas.
Certainly, I think there's a symbiotic relationship to be had between Embark and our public transportation system and the scooters. And I hope that there's no limit if we were to partner with each other. But I don't, it didn't seem workable just based on what I saw. But I, to me, the safety component, we're not there. And I don't know if we just let everybody litigate each other and let the courts figure this out. But I mean, that problems, I think, are inevitable with this system. Thanks.
By the way, staff did come up with an analogy for a commercial purpose that occurs in the public right of way, and it was food trucks. And they do not have revocable permits. They have some kind of permits, more health-related probably, and they roam around as demand warrants. And then they park in our public right of way, and their customers are expected probably to take up the sidewalk. So it's an interesting analogy. Any other questions, comments for Rob? Councilman Stone?
Well, I was just going to say real quick that the permit thing, again, it only takes care of the nesting issue. I mean...
Right.
After that, they're spread all over the right of way.
Would you prefer you say, what do you call them? You called them nests just now.
Lime hubs. How them what?
Lime hubs.
Lime hubs.
S surfer birds.
I rode a Lime bicycle two weeks ago.
I'd say vending locations to be brand neutral. So, but yes, I understand. So what happens when they drop them off, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we still have the same issues. I don't really see that, other than limiting where they can put it where it's most needed, I don't really see that solving what in my mind could grow to be a real issue for us, which is controlling them where they're at, making sure they're where they need to be throughout the day in terms of not laying all over the place, which...
And there's almost no way to control that, because that's the use...
We do have a rebalancing team during the day. So we deploy in the morning, early. We, of course, pick them up at night. But during the day, we have a team that does go around and properly place them in places where they should be, or at least if a customer parked it in front of a cafe, they pull over because it wasn't properly parked and park it in a safe spot. That customer will still have access to that, but at least it's placed somewhere else. And if need be, we can always ramp that up as scooter count ramps up to be able to kind of adjust and make sure that scooters are properly parked. But you're right, they will end up where the customers want to take them. It's a matter of making sure the customers know how to park them and making sure that we're able to police them and readjust them properly so they're not in the way if they happen to be.
Looks like Laura has a thought on this.
So the licensing ordinance, Councilman, does contain some measures that are attempting to address that. For example, the scooter companies are required to have an 800 number on each of the units, and then they're required to pick up from private property within an hour and from public property within two hours when they're notified of a scooter being in a place where that property owner does not want it to be. So that is meant to help with that issue of where they might end up.
So, and that sounds, I mean, that sounds great to me. So they have to do the permit. What's the cost of the permit?
More or less?
$302.
And that's per location, right?
Per location, and $30 per scooter.
$30 per scooter with 302. And then, huh, so if you do that, and then you decide, okay, this location really isn't a good location for us, you're just out the $302. Is that correct?
$302 per company. So it's just one $302. So once they have a...
But not per location?
Right. The revocable permit is $50. The revocable is $50.
Per location.
Per location.
Per location.
And we're allowed to have, sorry?
That cost is to recover the cost of staff time in reviewing the documents, the insurance, the property owner's authorization, all that sort of thing. And in the event that they don't use it, they don't use it, if they need to request additional locations.
Is that revocable permit essentially permanent until we should revoke it? I mean, they don't have to come back every year for that, or?
They don't have to come back every year for that, I don't believe. I believe it's permanent until it's revoked.
Okay.
And each permit is good for five scooters per location. So the coffee shop, regardless of where the location is, for each permit, we can put up to five scooters.
So if you wanted to put 10 at one location, then you have to buy a second permit?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And we're considering that for some busier locations that have requested more scooters. We'll just have to submit another permit.
So I will say that the five was established when we were doing 75 scooters total. We established that so that we would have some spreading out of the scooters. I don't know that that's a, I mean, staff set that number. I don't know that it's not adjustable.
Is that memorialized in your proposed ordinance?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Would they need a revocable permit if they were doing it at a bus stop partnering with Embark?
I'm going to say yes, because that is on the right of way.
They'd just be getting our permission?
Where they, right. Where they don't need a revocable permit is at Trader Joe's or any other private property. Like when they talked about Class and Curve, they won't need a revocable permit inside the shopping area.
But we are still receiving letters of objection from all the private property locations we are deploying to, just so that there's an agreement between us and the private property owner.
Can multiple companies receive revocable permits at the same location?
So right now, we're telling them that we won't overlap them. But I don't know that that won't, I mean, we wouldn't overlap them before, but I don't know that we wouldn't now. Because if people are, if there's enough room available for the scooters, we might overlap them. Or at least put them side by side. You know, five scooters is only going to take up maybe seven feet of space, so...
So if we won't overlap them, how would they place those at a special event that has a revocable permit?
We haven't addressed that yet, but I, now that you've brought it, it's been brought up, I would think that that might be a provision. We put in the special, because it'll be a revocable for the special permit. And maybe as a part of that, we could designate that there will be some scooter spaces as a part of that. I'm making that up, Councilman, but that sounds to me to maybe be a solution to that.
So generally, the revocables for special events are to close streets. And so an event wants that street area restricted for those event participants. And so I would suggest that they might have to make arrangements with the special event in order to deploy scooters there. The Arts Festival, for example, may not want scooters deployed inside of the revocable permit area, because it might not be safe for the number of pedestrians that will be in that area. But there may be an adjacent revocable permit area that would be acceptable for the scooters to be deployed.
And we've been talking to some of the local festivals, including the Arts Festival at Passo and a couple of other events like at Plaza. And the whole idea there would be not to have scooters necessarily deployed inside the event, because again, it makes sense. There's plenty of people walking around. It's more about getting to and from the event because parking becomes an issue for some of these smaller communities and the thousands of folks that it's sent upon their events. So most likely, I don't foresee us trying to work with a festival or an events company to deploy within the event, like the State's Fair or something like that, but more about providing transportation from that parking lot that's way down the way back and to, back and forth to the event, or just being able to get around to the event and get back home from wherever you may have come from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on. Is there any other comments, questions for Rob? We also have some representatives from Bird that are going to come forward. Okay, thanks, Rob. And so we have Blanca and Matt. It's up to you how you want to handle that. We'll welcome you both.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Manager. My name is Blanca LaBord, and I am Senior Manager of Government Relations for Bird Rides. I'm very happy to be here today with you and very happy to be providing a last-mile transportation option for the citizens of Oklahoma City. We're very happy to be here. Thank you very much for your willingness to tackle the issue of dockless mobility with your proposed ordinance. We believe that responsible regulation and enforcement is an important part of dockless mobility and the future of dockless mobility as we expand in your communities. Your draft ordinance includes many of the essential elements that make scooters a safe and reliable option for all citizens, including requiring education of customers on safety, including use of helmets, following the rules of the road, not riding on sidewalks, guidelines for proper parking for safety, and also for accessibility, and requiring that dockless vehicle companies have a customer deactivation policy to deal with riders who chronically break the rules of the road. We put a priority on safety, and we educate our riders on proper parking. And beyond that, we are constantly developing new tools to educate the riders and also to incentivize them to follow the rules and to park safely. We have new technology coming online all the time that is going to help give us the tools and to give cities the tools on some of the enforcement issues that have to do with parking and safety. Should there be any concerns about the location or parking of our scooters, we agree with your two-hour relocation timeline that you set out in your ordinance. We stand ready to comply with that, and indeed, we expect that we will surpass this two-hour standard. We have a pledge that we have made, and it's called the Save Our Sidewalks pledge. And one of the important tenants of that, you know, we want to keep walkways accessible, clear, and clutter-free. So one of the elements of our SOS pledge is that we collect, we pick up daily. Our scooters get picked up and taken off the road every day in order to keep those sidewalks clear. Our scooters are put in their nest at 7:00 AM, and we remove them at dusk. And they are disabled at night. We do not want to encourage riders to ride at night. The time that we pick them up and the time that they're disabled every evening, it depends on the season, right? It depends when, in the summer, it's going to be later than in the winter. Data sharing, also a key to our partnership. And also, as you mentioned, Mr. Councilman, gives really the opportunity to work cooperatively and to engage in transit planning, and that helps close the gap between getting from your front door to those transit options. So we're very much looking forward to sharing that data with you and incorporating it into your other transit that you have in Oklahoma City, and excited also to partner with Streetcar on how we're going to be able to close some of those gaps so that we can increase usage of that Streetcar. We thank you for amending the maximum fleet size number at your last hearing. We think this is really important. We think that a utilization cap that you've incorporated is also very important. This ensures that the fleet size is responsive to citizen needs and demand. We do agree with Lime that perhaps, that definitely maybe more than 25 a week is more appropriate. Again, this is another tenant of our SOS pledge. We are committed to only growing our fleet when the scooters in the community have an average of three rides a day. We call this smart growth, and again, it's part of our Save Our Sidewalks pledge. We also believe that your license fee of $302 a year and $30 per vehicle is reasonable. Thank you. In addition to these fees, we encourage you to also build into your ordinance a third tenant of our SOS pledge, which is requiring all dockless vehicle companies to pay a dollar per vehicle per day to the city government or to any related organization to use towards building or repairing bike lanes, other transit lanes, promoting safe riding, and maintaining our shared infrastructure. We do have some concerns about incorporating, or serious concerns about incorporating the current revocable permit process into this new ordinance, which is being crafted to address a new option for citizens in your city, right? Your existing process requires us to apply for a permit for each nest location. And again, the nests are where the birds are set out each morning and occasionally where they are rebalanced throughout the day. Oklahoma City would be the first city in the country to require a permit for nest locations. While we applaud you for the ordinance you've crafted, this particular provision gives us pause. As the Assistant City Manager mentioned, things are changing every single day in this industry. And we are in over 30 cities in the United States. In most of those cities, we either have an ordinance, some cities have immediately passed an ordinance, but many cities, because there are many changes and because every community is different, and this tool, this option is going to function differently in every community, depending what transit they have, depending on their geography, depending on population, depending on density, depending on the weather, right? Some cities have taken an approach of signing an interim agreement with us that is going to put in place some regulation that gives the city some protection, that sets out guidelines for parking, for safety, for use of the right of way, for data, in order to later inform them with permanent ordinance. So in this area, for example, Dallas, they passed a permanent ordinance, but they had already gone through a learning process on dockless bikes, right? So between the period of time that dockless bicycles arrived in the city of Dallas in, I believe it was August of 2017, and when the city of Dallas finally passed their permanent dockless vehicle ordinance, the industry had changed tremendously. Scooters had come on the scene. Some of those bike companies left the city. They left the country. Some of those bike companies expanded and are continuing to expand into the scooter market. So I always tell people, you know, Dallas, it's kind of like you tell your kids, right? Like, I went through all those lessons, so you don't have to. Dallas did that because their city management, their staff, their elected officials really took a lot of heat for those, I believe it was 25,000 bikes they had at the peak. By the time they passed their ordinance, they only had 2,500 bikes. And now they have, of course, scooters. And I think that if you were to speak with anyone in the city of Dallas, in their transportation department, I think they're very pleased with how everything has rolled out. Our company currently has 3,000 permits with the city of Dallas, and we've been able to grow and deploy in a very orderly way and really avoided a lot of those first take-ups that they had when dockless bicycles came onboard. The city of Austin, they have taken a slightly different approach. They have put in emergency rules, again, so they can gather data and see how it works in their community, and then will pass a permanent ordinance. City of San Antonio took a little bit of the middle-of-the-road approach, a little bit like Dallas, and they are working on their ordinance. In fact, tomorrow, they're having a hearing on their ordinance, and it's been also very well received there. Kansas City has a temporary operating agreement. St. Louis is operating under an ordinance. City of Denver, also temporary operating agreement. Charlotte and Atlanta. So, you know, cities, depending on what their needs are, are either passing permanent ordinances or, again, entering into an interim operating agreement in order to gauge how it works in their community. But this, the permitting of every nest, again, this would be the first city in the country that would do it. And so this model is very much driven by supply and demand, right? We, Lime talked a little bit about those smart growth, and free market and citizen demand should also drive placement in the morning of those scooters. While we're going through this revocable permit process, and we were happy to do so, until we got to this juncture and hoping that you would craft a comprehensive ordinance, really in order for the model to work and to provide the most reliable transportation options for the city and for the citizens, we've got to have that flexibility to move those nests. For example, you talked today about special events. If there's a special event, and I, there's a lot of special events coming up here at the end of the month. If you've got a special event and a certain area of the city is going to be closed for that special event, perhaps we already have, under the current system, a revocable permit in that area, right? We likely wouldn't want to be inside of a festival that's not really part of, that's not a good use of scooters, right? But again, as Lime mentioned, we want to have a way for people to get there. So to move, we wouldn't be able to use those permit locations that we currently have inside the festival. We would have to seek a whole, brand-new permit to continue to move scooters around the festival. I mean, it just doesn't give us the flexibility to meet that demand. The way we decide where our nests are is, it's a complex system. We use, you know, our brains and our eyes and also numbers and statistics, and it varies, it might vary by the day of the week. Mondays might be different from Thursdays, that are different from Sundays. It might vary by the season, you know, summer, winter, fall. Right now, it's football season, and so we see a lot of scooters are a great way to get to the game, and then we immediately have to move them back out so people can get them back in, because we don't want them, we probably don't want people riding scooters when they're leaving the game, just as a safety measure. So, you know, all of those things make this, the way you currently have the revocable permit integrated into this ordinance problematic. We take property ownership and property rights very, very seriously. We have an internal process for dealing with any property owner objections. There's a phone number and an email on our scooter, and we also provide a separate number for property owners to contact us. If we get a call from a property owner saying, "I don't want a nest there," we immediately remove that nest. In the alternative, sometimes we have a property owner that wants a nest there. In fact, we don't get as many complaints as we do requests, and, you know, if you could incorporate those protections for property owners and protection of the right-of-way into your ordinance, such as requiring that two-hour, that two-hour removal threshold, I think that you might be able to address some of those concerns that you had about the right-of-way and about protecting those private property rights. So I don't know if you have any questions or if I can answer anything for you.
Question from Councilman Greenwell.
Yeah, do you have any concerns over the cost that the city is charging with respect to the permit for each location? I believe, Laura, you said it's $50 per location. Is that a concern?
Well, I would say that if the revenue is a concern for the city, that I very much encourage you to incorporate that dollar a scooter a day into your ordinance, and that would cover those costs, in fact, beyond what the revenue would be for that revocable permit.
Yeah, you know, especially as they expand into more and more locations, I think that $50 per location could be somewhat problematic. I don't know your figure, so I don't know how problematic that could be. And now that I've heard everyone discuss, I'm not as concerned with the revocable permit being granted prior to relocating or adding a new location, if that would help expand the use of this. As long as if, after a few months, we encountered some problems, then we could come back and revisit a requirement to first have a permit before you expand it into a new location. I'd say let's, if that's going to help, then let's try it and see without too many restrictions initially.
Counselor McLeod. I missed what you said, that you were looking forward to sharing data with us on transit. What data are you going to be?
Well, you've got some data requirements that are inside, in this ordinance that we would be sharing with you, right? And some of that is going to be heat maps, what are the routes that people are taking, what are the locations, like, where are people going? Like, we have found in some cities, once we start sharing data, their transportation department might say, "Wow, we were going to put bike lanes on Maple Street, but it turns out people don't take Maple Street on that route. They take it, they take Main Street." And so that will help with some of that, guide some of those things, and also some of your transit stops, and frequency, location. You start seeing that transit might, transit use will increase as more people have that first mile and last mile. That is the expectation.
Matt Ball. To Councilman Greenwell's point, actually, on the revocable permits, if, because we are going to be sharing data with the city, we would want that data to be as accurate and as reflective of true citizen transportation patterns as is possible, and by permitting where nests are placed each morning, and that being the requirement, rather than the market dictating and licensees responding to demand, that it could perhaps skew the accuracy of that data. And so we would ask that market demand be the driving force for where scooters are placed each morning, as long as we are doing what we agree to do elsewhere as a part of the license and with respect to parking the scooters, et cetera.
I have a general question. Is there a third company at this point that's providing these scooters?
There are other scooter companies, and you talked about competition earlier, and we encourage competition, and, you know, we feel, because there are so many changes and things change every single day, we think it's important to be able to include other companies. We do have some concern that we think could be addressed with a minimum fleet number of, say, 100, because if you don't have enough scooters, the numbers might not work enough for you to keep them up.
Yeah. No, I would agree with that. So Bird and Lime, is there another company similar to your size?
I believe we're in more markets than anywhere, anyone else, yes.
So we have heard from Razor. They are interested, Razor is interested in coming into the market. From my observations, there are 12 companies that are in this market piece, although I don't know very much about the size of those companies.
Yeah. You know, the point's well-taken that if you get too small of a company, although I'm all for new businesses and companies entering into certain markets, give them the opportunity to do that and prove themselves, but they tend to be limited in resources, and the level of service may not be as good. If you all demonstrate, both Lime and Bird, a willingness to work with us, willingness to work with the property owners, and encourage your customers as much as possible to maintain a safe attitude when using your vehicles, that's all we're concerned with, I think. I mean, that's all I'm concerned with at this point in time, is the safety of the public, working with the property owners where you might be placing these vehicles, making sure they want them and they're agreeable to allowing you to place them there. Outside of that, I see a lot of benefits, but I just want to say one last time, I'm still concerned about the safety, both with the rider of the vehicles as well as people they may encounter. Thank you.
One other question, so Kenny's not here, but Laura or Jim, is it possible, if you wanted to do a partnership on the public transportation piece, to do an RFP or carve that out and have a separate agreement? I don't know where the council is on caps, but say the council wanted to do a cap. Could you do an RFP with one or two companies?
We could. Jason has indicated a willingness to work with the scooter companies as we go forward to try to, you know, try to find out and accommodate where it would be, you know, best suited to provide those to the bus stops.
But so you could carve, I mean, you could potentially have a separate set of rules or some modification of the rules for that RFP or for that partnership?
I would think so.
Ed, you know, in terms of talking about allowing scooters to be placed at bus stops, normally, most bus stops that I'm familiar with are in front of some type of a business. So, I mean, I think you would still need to get permission of the business owner. Now, I don't know this, Jason, maybe you can inform us, but the bus stop itself is just a small, little area. There's really not, you know, how much property do we own outside of the bus stop?
We don't own any property for a bus stop. It's a, we carve out a piece, a piece of the right-of-way. There's no standard that there's room for scooters, and they weren't designed for scooters.
Yeah.
So there's no standard that they can accommodate them or not. We'd have to look at each area individually and try to identify an area where there could be a scooter, what was your term?
Vending location.
Vending location.
Yeah. So, for example, the stop I normally use is in, is in front of a Brahms store, and so you'd work with that Brahms store as to whether or not they would allow scooters, or some business very close to that bus stop.
Right. But if we don't do, if we don't have revocable permits, then they're going to be able, we're not going to have the ability to go work with them. They're going to put them wherever they deem necessary.
Well, okay. No, I understand that, Jim, I do, but I just believe, as they've mentioned, let supply and demand kind of drive this issue where people want them and where they're taking them to in use.
But you could have a separate rule for, you could have one that has permits, one that doesn't, or if you, if that became necessary to work with Brahms, or I think our busiest bus stop is at Pennsylere, or by the, I, Jason.
So I do want to mention, first of all, that private property doesn't require a permit. So if it's at Brahms, they won't, they won't need a revocable permit. We will need time to look at the transit system. I mentioned last time that we want to preserve our ADA accessibility. Our bus stops right now are not designed, paved areas that are adjacent for scooters, but that doesn't mean we can't continue to work on this, just haven't had time. We're trying to, trying to address an issue that came up very quickly. So we will, we'll look at that, we'll see if we really need to have a separate agreement or if there are just ways for us to encourage certain locations to have availability of scooters. I also want to mention that in the event that the revocable permit is removed from the ordinance, we will need to work on, you know, that's, that's the way we applied the insurance requirement, and we applied the property owner notification, so we'll need to work on building that back into the ordinance. There also might be an adjustment on the fee recommended from staff at that point, because we would have less ability to control the types and nature of the complaints that we'd be managing.
Laura, can you help me understand, thinking first of all, in terms of Ward 5, where a revocable permit would be required? Would it be, for example, at a park? If they wanted to place scooters at a park, would they require a revocable permit there?
Yes.
Okay. But outside of that?
If they were, if they were placing it on the right-of-way, they would require a revocable permit. If they were placing it in the park?
They'd require a different permit.
Okay.
Right.
So they'd need it in the park?
Or a permit from the parks department.
Right.
But outside of that, if they had it at some shopping center or some retail outlet?
If they had it at the Early Wine YMCA, they would need an agreement with the Early Wine YMCA.
Yeah.
If they had it at the 7-Eleven across the street from that, they'd need an agreement with them.
But if they had it, for example, continuing that with Sellers Park, they would need a permit with Sellers Park to have those. But outside of that, I don't see a whole lot of need for revocable permits in Ward 5. Is that fair to say?
I'm trying to think of the whole word. I don't know. I.
That's a policy for you to counsel to make. We have, we have an approach here where we're trying to have some type of control where they, where they might.
I understand.
If they're in front of somebody's private property and they don't want it there, we thought we would try to accommodate that.
Oh, no, I think that's important, that if the property owner doesn't want them.
You're trusting them to do that.
I know, that's what I'm saying, if we could rely upon them working with the property owners, and if they, and if we get.
So the revocable permit was the way that we were requiring them to work with the property?
Yeah, no, I understand, and I appreciate that, but as they expand out into the entire city, the full 622 square miles, to get, to pay $50 per location, and then, then a month or two later, determining, hey, this was a bad decision on our part because nobody's renting them, you know, if you got hundreds and hundreds of permits times $50, that becomes a pretty big number.
If I might, if I could, I would say, to Councilman Greenwell, to your point, we would suggest perhaps incorporating, there are multiple areas here in the ordinance where it's, we as an operator or as a licensee have to demonstrate certain internal practices to the city to be able to operate under a license.
Right.
We would, we would suggest simply that there be an internal process for property owner objection that's in place as part of the license, and we would suggest the city strictly enforce that, and to, which I think solves your concern.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I think if we began to receive a certain number of complaints from property owners that said, "Hey, these showed up on my property I had no knowledge or had given approval," too many of those complaints would warrant our ability, no, our interest in reviewing these ordinances and making them tighter than what they currently are.
But perhaps as a part of the license agreement, include something, language that, take the two-hour language and move it into the license requirement upfront, that we have to demonstrate a willingness to be able to move them within two hours from the public right-of-way as a part of the agreement to hold the license.
Pardon me. Councilman Shadid.
I would also say, there was an example mentioned earlier, I think, by the municipal councillor, dealing with the arts festival, and I'd like for us to think about that for just a second. The arts festival is one revocable permit, but there are perhaps hundreds of folk, of interests or entities or individual artists conducting commercial activity in the city's right-of-way. So, and that's one permit. And so what, I'd see that as a little bit inconsistent with what we're talking about here, by applying revocable permits to an individual operator in the city right-of-way. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Yeah.
When do we issue those permits? How do we decide what the size or scope of that permit is? So can I go in and say Capitol Hill?
Yeah. That would not be acceptable.
That would not be acceptable. Eric can talk to you about the criteria that he uses for the evaluation of the revocable permits.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. We've been working very closely, the Public Works staff, with both Bird and Lime on permits. And so, it requires that an address be located first, but then we actually have them do an aerial image of where they'd actually like to place that drop-off location. We're checking that drop-off location to make sure that it's compliant with sightlines, that it's not too close to an intersection, that it's not on top of a sidewalk, that it's not in a landscaped area, making sure it's behind the curb, and that it's in a reasonably sized space that they could park up to the five scooters. And so, we're actually going through quite a bit of review to just make sure that it's a permissible location and not just a dot on a map. And some of the other things that Assistant City Manager Laura Johnson mentioned, I mean, we're also checking for the insurance certificate, we're checking for the letters of no objection from the property owner. And upon receipt of the fee and all those things being considered, we are approving those applications, sometimes same day or within just a couple of days. So, it's a very quick process as long as there's no questions.
Thanks.
Quick question, Eric. Is that working?
I believe it's working very well. We have processed all applications received from Bird to date. We've processed 29 applications from Lime. We have 12 to 13 that are in review currently that we hope to have out in the next day or two. But we've asked both of them to consider allowing Public Works up to seven days for a permit review, so we feel like a week is allowable. You have to remember, these aren't coming in one at a time. They're typically coming in in groups or in large packages. And so, when we do get a large receipt at once, we are asking if there's any that are priority locations, so we'd expedite those. But again, we're committed to getting them out very quickly.
Is this an issue that is gaining a lot of attention right now, but in a matter of 60 days after most of the applications have been submitted and approved, it kind of goes away? You know, you have one or two a week maybe coming in.
Well, I would say so when we receive the initial applications from Bird, just a few weeks ago, we have not yet received additional applications. Lime has just submitted their second set, but I would say that we've also returned a few to Lime as well that are not appropriate. They have been identified either on private property, which again, as we kind of go through that initial process, I think, again, those first few applications are kind of a learning curve to understand what's really needed and what's not. There's a few that were identified in landscaped areas, but they're going to be most likely resubmitting those. So, I mean, again, that's, we haven't received a lot of applications since those initial submittals, but they can in big groups.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions? Any other members of the public that wishes to speak on this item?
I have a comment, if I may, on the permitting process and the locations that have been permitted. You know, when we have a nest ordinarily in a city that's been placed there because we had a property owner request it, or our teams on the ground thought that it was close to transit or a good place to put a nest, when our chargers go and drop those, they also have to take a picture, and we later review those. And some of those nests, for whatever reason, maybe the pavement is, maybe there's a slope, maybe there, it's near a crosswalk where people have to get to the button, maybe there's construction on that road. Our nest team looks at those photos and they make adjustments. And that is part of how we can have an orderly deployment every day. When we have to go through the revocable permit process, not only administratively, we have to decide ahead of time and permit those locations, once we have that, our nest team doesn't have the ability to say, you know what, we really need to move this down 10 feet because that's just better placement, it's going to look better, it's less in the way, you know, there's a better furniture zone there. And so, you know, that becomes problematic for us administratively. And it, again, it impedes the product that you're getting and the way you see the scooters placed on the road.
You indicated that you would share data, utilization data with us. I don't know that we need or want it, but would you be willing to share those photos of how users are actually parking them and where?
Yeah, so we have, we have the photos of where our chargers leave them in the morning. So, those are in the nest, right? There's the other issue of where our riders, once they take them from the nest, leave them, and they also take a photo. And those photos are also being analyzed so we can see, you know, maybe Matt Ball doesn't park right. And so, eventually Matt Ball's going to get a little note on his app that says, Matt, you know, park nicely, or it might say, Matt, stop riding on the sidewalk. So, we're working on that, that technology, and yes, we're happy to share with you what we are showing to our chargers as this is the ideal nest location. And again, so not only do we give chargers the, okay, at 123 Main Street, this is where you should put them, this is how you should line them up, right? We show them a picture of that, and then they in turn, every time they drop, have to take a picture, and we can say, you know what, that was not a good drop charger, you need to be reeducated, or if they're consistently not putting the nests, the birds out properly, they're going to be, their charging privileges are going to be suspended, let's say. So, that's part of the...
I was part of it.
So, that's, that's the part that, you know, administratively, while we, we agree with the goals of that, of that process, and we were happy to comply as we were moving towards, you know, a more comprehensive policy, all of the things that they look at in that process, like placement, not being too close to an intersection, et cetera, can be put into the ordinance, as can the insurance requirement, and then that can be policed that way, in that way.
Are you aware of any municipality that cites the rider for reckless endangerment or reckless driving?
That's, that's interesting. So, we are working with municipalities, a lot of places, law enforcement is still just giving warnings, but it's amazing what just a little bit of enforcement can do. For example, in California, you're required to wear a helmet. It's state law. And, you know, you look out there and most people aren't wearing helmets in California until the police decided to do a weekend crackdown and give out tickets for not wearing helmets, and all of a sudden you saw people wearing helmets, right? It's kind of like jaywalking. You know, it's, it's against the law, people do it, but if you have a week of enforcement and all of a sudden it's on the news and you're hearing from your friend that they got a ticket for jaywalking, people stop jaywalking. So, there's all different tools we can use. Certainly, that is one of them. Right now, there are municipalities that are giving tickets, but a lot, like in Dallas right now, they're, they're giving warnings, they're giving citation warning, warning citations.
What about utilizing an electric scooter when inebriated or impaired, chemically impaired?
Well, of course, different states are, are different as to what their DUI or driving under the influence laws are and what vehicles they cover.
Okay.
It's a vehicle, it's motorized vehicle.
It is, so it'd be covered by?
Yes.
And that's one of the reasons, actually, that we take our scooters off the road, because we do not want to encourage people to be drinking and riding their scooters.
Okay.
Wanted to say one thing also, I know that a minute ago it was mentioned by city staff that, that the revocable permit process was also how they had incorporated the insurance requirements. We would also ask that that be a part of the license, the ability to have a license in the city. I think a lot of those concerns can be incorporated into the license rather than permitting each individual location.
Any other comments in this public hearing from the public? Okay, so that concludes our public hearing. We'll have the third stage in this process on September 25th, in which we'll have the final vote presumably. And so, no vote is required, so we would move on again to a public hearing, at this time on the marijuana ordinance. And I believe we have, does any comments from the council before we get started? So, we have one, one citizen signed up to speak, Eleanor Thompson.
I am a proud resident of Lincoln Terrace, which is in Ward 7, and a proud member of Pastor Cooper's Church.
Eleanor, would you mind giving us your address for the record?
I live in Lincoln Terrace, 606 Northeast 17th.
Thank you.
ZIP Code 73105. Okay. I am here to speak on behalf of myself and my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, Social Action Committee, and we have various forums to educate the youth of our community on the laws and appropriate behavior and their relationship with law enforcement. And in reading this, and I have seen it on the news, I am very proud of Chief City, and I'm in support of this, not because I'm in support of people using drugs, so we'll make that clear. I'm in support of this because in supporting our youth, there are things that they can do, and even our young adults, which can disturb their lives. And remembering back the last century that I was in law school, there are four reasons why we punish, and kind of none of these fit. I mean, having a penalty this steep and having people imprisoned for something this minor doesn't really fit. It's certainly not a deterrent. It is punishment, so it fits the retribution, it doesn't rehabilitate. So, it's really kind of senseless. But we want people to become employed, to become active, productive members of society. I've told my children, I will die the day that I know, and only the day that I know, that you will be self-sustaining, productive citizens. If you incarcerate someone for six months, really, a month could do it, they lose their job. Then, once they've lost their job, their likelihood of getting another meaningful job diminishes. So, lowering these penalties, I think, is a very good thing, especially since you've taken away incarceration. Also, if you arrest someone and the car is full, everybody's going to get charged. So, sometimes it's not even equal what happens to everybody, and I have witnessed people not really defending charges, against charges, because they would lose their job. I saw a guy the other day saying, ma'am, I'm in school, I work two days, I work seven days a week, I can't come back. So, you end up with people saying, okay, to offenses because of the inconvenience of sustaining the penalties. So, I would like to commend the chief for this proposal, and I'm in support of it. And my other schedule permitting, I will come back on the 25th to see your actual vote. I'm very proud to stand here in front of Councilman Cooper. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I think you did very well, Seb, and I appreciate you coming and participating in the public hearing. What are your thoughts about having two separate penalties, one for marijuana possession and one for paraphernalia? Does that seem redundant in any way?
Well, not really, but yes. More unnecessary for the paraphernalia being separate because there can be something in your possession that you may not even know is paraphernalia. As a person who's had experience with people who are diabetics and in possession of needles, there may be a reason why there are needles in a car, but that may be considered drug paraphernalia. So, if the drug isn't there, but just the paraphernalia is, it's really rather superfluous or just kind of mean. But I'm not seeing it's redundant because they are separate things to have paraphernalia versus having the actual prohibited substance.
Well, as I understand this ordinance, if you had marijuana, you would, you could have a $400 fine, and then if you had a pipe to smoke it?
$200.
You'd have another $400 fine. And so...
I'm going to be very careful as a retired federal prosecutor. That is a discretionary means on the part of the prosecutorial arm, whether to stack and that stacking. And then there's also the judicial discretion on dismissals. So, I don't want to say, I don't want to be harsh on that.
Okay.
I mean, because I'm, I do educate the public and all my kids and my sorority events and things, but I...
I was just asking, because that's something I'm struggling with.
Sure.
It seems like if somebody had marijuana, that's the, it seems like the pipe is just redundant, it's part of smoking marijuana.
And, but that's a discretion in whether to hand out a charge for that. So, that's, that's a discretion.
I think it's, I think we all struggle with that. It seems to be repetitive. If you're charged with one thing, why would you be charged with the other one as on top of that?
Right.
And I think there's a consistent concern about how, you know, we do fines and fees and those kinds of things. And so, it really is a challenge if you're charged with possession, then, I mean, you know, then why would you also be charged with paraphernalia as well? And so, I don't know.
Yeah.
I struggle with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other thoughts from the council, questions? Any other member of the public that wishes to speak in this public hearing? Can you just give your name and address for the record, please?
To recently, 2020 North Shore Town. I agree with her, but another thing, the scooters are like them, and I was wondering if they consider, like, you know, having the parents ride with them with the proper helmet, you know, I guess 12 or 6, something like that. What do y'all think about that? All of you?
So, so you're going back to the scooter issue. I think that all the, the companies have a policy that you can't ride it if you're less than 18.
Okay.
So, I don't think that would...
I was just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other member of the public comments on the marijuana ordinance? Okay, so again, step three of three will be on September 25th, in which presumably the final vote would be taken at that time. That moves us to item 9F, and this is, this is related to the streetcar?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, this again is a public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments from the council on item, item 9F? Okay, so we'll move that to September 25th as well, no vote is required. 9G, another public hearing, also related to the streetcar. Has anybody signed up to speak? Any thoughts or comments from the council? We'll move this to September 25th for the final hearing. One more on 9H, anyone signed up to speak? Any thoughts or comments from the council? We'll move this for the final vote on September 25th. Moves us to 9I. This is the first of three meetings in the process, item to be, ordinance to be introduced.
And Lisa Cronister is here to talk to us about this this morning. This has to do with an overlay on Lincoln Boulevard.
Good morning. I don't think it's afternoon yet. Lisa Cronister, Planning Department, here to present to you a proposed ordinance amendment that will create a new design overlay for a portion of North Lincoln Boulevard. I manage the current Planning and Urban Design Division of the Planning Department. We implement the city's design review ordinance across six different design districts, downtown, Bricktown, Historic Preservation, for example. The Urban Design District is, is one of our districts. It's an overlay zoning district that includes many of our city's most popular character districts like Plaza District, Capitol Hill, Asian District. And that's why it made sense to, when we were studying the possibility of a new overlay on Lincoln Boulevard, that's why it made sense to locate it within the Urban Design The catalyst... The catalyst for this ordinance was a request by the State Office of Management and Enterprise Services, OMES. The state is one of the largest landowners of North Lincoln Boulevard, roughly between Northeast 30th and I-44. And as they sell land in the next few years for redevelopment, they wanted to ensure that there were design guidelines that would protect future investment, and also support this concept of a grand entrance into the capital area. So city staff worked with OMES to develop the ordinance, and the purpose and intent that arose out of our effort was to create a vibrant urban corridor, support quality new development, ensure high-quality design, provide for an appropriate mix of uses, promote pedestrian-friendly access, and ensure that new development is compatible with existing neighborhoods. There's quite a large area of established neighborhood to the east of Lincoln Boulevard. After OMES requested that the Planning Department study an overlay, we, planning staff, we analyzed existing conditions, and we created a draft of design concepts to present to a stakeholders' group. The stakeholders' group was really engaged. We had two very productive meetings with them. Members included commissioners of the land office, since they manage a lot of the state land, OMES, members of the Urban Design Commission, since the Urban Design Commission is what would hear cases presented in this area, ACOG, Chicasaw Nation. All of these entities are property owners. We also had representation from the surrounding neighborhoods, so people not on Lincoln, but who would be directly affected by anything we did here. Planning staff also, so we had stakeholder meetings, we also had several very well-attended public meetings. We sent public notice to property owners and adjacent property owners. We had two meetings to present the ordinance and gain their feedback. So the general concept, initial concept for the boundary was property facing Lincoln Boulevard between Northeast 30th and Central Park Drive, which is a street just south of I-44. And when you're looking at this boundary in front of you, you're probably thinking, well, that looks pretty irregular. But it was actually formed on some pretty strict concepts. One was, we were going to exclude existing planned unit developments and simplified planned unit developments, since their zoning and guidelines had already previously been negotiated. We're going to exclude the existing R1, which is single-family residential properties, because all of the design guidelines we're talking about are geared toward commercial development. So leave out the PEDs, leave out the R1, capture the C3 zoning. We're going to follow the line of existing C3 zoning that happens mostly to the west of Lincoln. And then why that's not, didn't result in a straight line, is because some parcels and some buildings straddled the line, and we didn't want to cut parcels, owners, and buildings So the ordinance amendment would create the new Lincoln Boulevard corridor overlay as a new urban design sub-district. Design review would be by Urban Design Commission, and planning staff as applicable. It would establish new development regulations and guidelines that have been tailored specifically to this area. It will modify some specific uses that are presently allowed in the existing base zoning districts. And we've worked really hard to minimize non-conforming structures by taking into consideration their existing use, their existing building form. So examples, so most of the uses that are currently allowed by the base zoning, base zonings in this area are I-2, C3, and O-2. Many of those uses will remain. We are proposing to add one use, multifamily residential. We're proposing to strike what the stakeholder group agreed were incompatible uses. Stockyards are allowed on some of these parcels, recycling facilities, flammable liquid, things like that. And then some uses have been modified to be conditional uses, and most of the conditions for these have to do with how they abut residential properties. So to planning staff's knowledge, none of the uses that we're proposing to strike currently exist on the corridor. So we don't believe we're making anybody non-conforming.
If you were to find someone non-conforming, based on a current use, I would assume your grandfather would...
Yeah, they would be grandfathered in. And the same would go for their existing building form. Nothing about this ordinance would require anybody to change unless they came in with a major renovation. So I need that...
So like, some of those particular businesses may have frontage, where there's parking and other things that might be a part of non-conforming. But if they were to tear those down, then they would have to...
Right, yes, but nothing from this would compel them to have to change it. So new development regulations should be established for building heights, setbacks, side yards, sidewalks, again, we're trying to create pedestrian amenities, the location of parking lots, and utility screening. So a couple of major changes in this area. The maximum building height currently is six stories. We're proposing to raise that to eight stories. The minimum building height, there is none, but we're proposing to make it two stories. The reason for that is to maximize, is to help maximize density in this area that's already developed with the Grand Boulevard and utilities, that new buildings need to take advantage of the existing infrastructure. The changes to the setbacks are trying to create a more uniform street wall and street presence with buildings closer to the street, parking behind the building or to the side, but not in front of the building. And for the building height, we have been sensitive to not having too tall buildings next to the existing neighborhoods to the east. Design guidelines have been, are being established, and like all of our design review districts, or many of them excluding HP, they're not style-specific. They are trying to establish durability, quality, facade transparency, quality landscaping, quality pedestrian circulation. And then some items, like fencing and parking, have both regulations and guidelines. So before today, we have presented this ordinance to Urban Design Commission, and they unanimously recommended approval. We've had multiple planning commission study sessions, Urban Development Committee and Planning Commission meetings. At their last meeting, they unanimously recommended approval, five to zero, which brings us to city council here today. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any thoughts or comments, questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much.
I'll mention real quick, there's also a companion item. This ordinance that I've just presented establishes the overlay and establishes design guidelines, but there's a companion Planning Commission case that will actually rezone the properties within the boundary into the district. That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to introduce and set for a public hearing. So move item one. So move, okay, all in favor, we'll take a vote. And I do that here, that passes unanimously. And then we'll, separate motion for item two. Look, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, and that passes unanimously, which moves us onto the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak here?
No one signed up.
That moves us to public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Has anyone signed up to speak? Look for a motion. And that passes unanimously. Item L, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Has anyone signed up to speak? I'll look for a motion. Second. And that passes unanimously, which brings us to a public, item M, public hearing.
This is a public hearing to establish a street assessment district or improvement district. We do those very rarely, and Eric Winger's just going to go over this very quickly with us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So we don't typically process a lot of these. There's sometimes two to three a year, but what you have before you on item 9M is a resolution creating a street assessment district for an area that's near northwest 178th and 10th. It's called the Villas at Silverhawk. We typically use this process when we get requests from property owners to have us, the city, consider taking over what was previously a private street, converting it then by upgrade to a public street, and then having the city take on long-term maintenance. What makes the Villas at Silverhawk a little bit interesting is that part of the streets inside this neighborhood community are public already. There's specifically one street within the boundary that's on northwest 172nd that's actually private. And so the process is, is that we will receive contact usually from the homeowners association or from a block of residents that are interested in engaging the process. It's one that's, it's set up by state statute, it's actually not a council process. A petition is created, and in this case, they had a 73% participation rate in wanting to proceed with the application. And the project is quite small, so the estimated cost is about $132,000 to make the necessary upgrades to the road. What's needed is some edge milling, some thin layer resurfacing, two ADA ramps need to be updated, and we expect that the construction would take about 60 days to accomplish. On a normal project like this, the costs are typically a lot higher. A project of this size won't require us to bid. We can actually use one of the city's unit price contracts, it's already been engaged. But with that, the city would front the cost. The actual cost of the improvements is paid by the individual property owners over time, and the city will recover those costs in the end through those property assessments that are made in future years. So with that, the application is for reconsideration for approval through resolution today, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
How much did you say total project was?
So this one is estimated at $132,000.
All right. I'll move item.
No one signed up to speak. Okay. All in favor, passes unanimously. Okay. That brings us to item N, we have a presentation.
We do. Doug's going to hear, is here to talk to us a little bit about our five-year capital planning process.
Right. What you have before you here today is a resolution to refer the five-year capital improvement projects plan to the Planning Commission for their review to ensure compliance with the comprehensive plan. The plan is updated every two years, and so 2016 was the last time that we did this. Geo bonds are one of the major sources here, the Water Utilities Trust, other department plans make up the plan that you have. This will come back from the Planning Commission for your final adoption. What is in the plan is $3.2 billion worth of projects. The biggest piece of that is from the trust funds, primarily OQUET, the Water Utility Trust, at $1.5 billion. Geo bond funds, the next largest source, at $633 million. As we look at it, by function, public services, the largest piece there, and again, that's airports, water, wastewater, public works, projects make up the vast majority of that $3.2 billion. We'll kind of skip over the type, and we'll look again just at the schedule. Planning Commission will begin review of this. We'll have departments, the large departments that have significant projects in the plan will be presenting to council in the coming meetings. Planning Commission will complete their review and make a recommendation back to the council. And then we'll have a public hearing and adoption by council on October 23rd. So again, there'll be several more meetings where you'll get information on the projects that are in the capital improvements plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, if you have any.
Any thoughts or questions? Okay. So this requires a vote. Look for a motion. You have a second? Passes unanimously. Brings us to item O, which is...
O is an item we've discussed a couple of times recently in executive session, and this is a resolution that would stop the process of using eminent domain to acquire the land off of the new Boulevard in breakdown.
Has anybody signed up to speak? Any thoughts or comments from the council? Okay, look for a motion. Second. And that passes unanimously. Item nine, I guess, requires a vote to go into executive session? Look for a motion. And that passes unanimously. Item Q also requires a vote to go into executive session? No, 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 we have, well, we do...
Give me the vote.
A vote to go into executive session, but before we do that, we have five people signed up to speak, so I guess we could do that first and then, okay. Let's start with Jim Snotty.
Office address is 4127 Northwest 122nd Street, 73120 is the ZIP code. I greatly appreciate you all taking the time out of your very busy schedule to allow us to review what we think is an ongoing travesty. This area that we'll be discussing is located at the northwest corner of Hefner Road and Hefner Parkway, all the way, on the west side, all the way north to 122nd Street. The northwest corner contains nine office buildings, which I represent. I was fortunate enough to help develop three of those buildings, which, those buildings include the Lakeside Women's Center and seven or eight other medical office buildings. Very high-end, very busy traffic, a lot of patients, a lot of good doctors in that area. So we were notified recently that Lamar Billboards Sign Company had a site located somewhere on property, they had a building, they had a sign permit, and ODOT condemned the site. They called me approximately nine months ago, they being Lamar, asking if they could put a billboard sign somewhere in our development called Hefner Point, where the nine buildings are. I immediately told them that there was a PUD in place, it's P-U-D-128. I told them that the PUD was silent towards doing building, billboards. And by being silent, I told them that they should go get a variance if they're going to do that, but we're not going to grant them one. None of our owners want this. All nine of us have kind of empowered me to come and beg and plead for you all to help intervene. So Lamar went to our neighbor to the north, Our Lord's Community Church, which I used to be a member of for 20 to 22 years, my family grew up there. And they struck a deal with Our Lord's Community Church to do a land easement at the northeast corner of the Our Lord's Community Church property. Unbeknownst to, I would assume, I'm assuming that Lamar probably didn't tell the church that there was a PUD in place that didn't allow billboards, because Lamar told me that they had a special deal with ODOT, that they could move a permit anyplace they wanted to within the highway, within 660 feet of a highway that's operated by ODOT. So this kind of gave Lamar a hall pass. So they entered into this sign easement agreement with Our Lord's Community Church, and I'm here to ask you all for help. I think there, I've been told that there is a statute in place that does in fact allow ODOT to allow them to move a sign permit, but I think that if that statute does indeed exist, it should be very specific that if they're allowing them to move a condemned building permit, it should go through the proper zoning and sign ordinance permitting process. Now, I think the statute probably... Now, I think the statute probably, just of the statute, which I've not read, probably states, or should state, that the hall pass, that the, that if they're going to allow them to move a sign, it should be on ODOT property, which we can't really control here. But this has gone to private property, which is not meeting the sign permits, it's not meeting the zoning requirements, and I would just ask for help from you all. And I think that, I would hope that you all would help intervene by engaging the Attorney General to look at this statute and see if it is in fact enforceable the way it is written. I would love for you all to get the Oklahoma City Permitting Desk and Sign Permitting Desk and Zoning Fellas involved with ODOT to go through the statute and see in fact if it's enforceable at all. I don't believe it is, because they've not, they've circumvented the process, which I believe that is the right process, and that is, they should go through the Oklahoma City Building Permit and the Zoning Desk and make sure that the property where they want to put this sign is zoned properly. It's not. With that said, I hope that you all engage, or become engaged with us and try to help figure out a way to analyze the statute and/or not permit Lamar to go forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Jim, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This caught me off guard. I mean, there's no billboard anywhere near there. But what, is this an electric, do you know if this is an electric?
Yes, electronic. They told me it would be 35 feet tall, and then the base of the billboard, which is probably 15 or 20 feet additionally, it, so it's a 55 to 60-foot billboard. They told us specifically it would be put tall enough to look over the new, brand-new Harts for Hearing Building, which is located just north of Our Lord's Community Church. It's a massive structure. You're exactly right. There are no billboards commencing on the north side from Memorial all the way down to the northwest corner of Northwest Expressway and the Parkway. Let's keep the Parkway beautiful. It's only a few roads in the, in this state that don't have billboards. It's not necessary. It would set a horrible precedent. They could go by a, pursuant to what they believe their statute allows them to do, they could go by a lot in Quail Creek that's vacant and put a sign up, even though it's not zoned properly. That's the way I'm interpreting all this.
When you're referring to the statute, you're talking about the state statute?
Yes.
Okay.
A state statute.
Okay.
Some of my betties are lawyers, and they've looked it up, and they've fed me just enough information to be dangerous. But it doesn't sound like it's, I think they've gone beyond the perimeters, certainly beyond the perimeters that have been set by zoning and code that the city has in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We've got a few more folks on this topic. We have Carrie Vaughn has signed up to speak. This is still on item nine Q. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Carrie Vaughn. I'm with Spencer Fain. The address is 9400 North Broadway Extension, Suite 600, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73114. Thank you for your time. I'm going to try not to repeat myself. Mr. Snoddy sort of laid some of the foundational grounds, but there is a digital billboard that's planned to go in within feet of Harts for Hearing Foundation, and I'm here on behalf of Harts for Hearing today. This digital billboard is a major concern for Harts for Hearing, as you'll hear also this afternoon from Joanna Smith. She's the Executive Director of Harts for Hearing. The city has been, this is also a major concern for the city. The city has been cut out of this process completely. Lamar believes that they don't have to come to the city, and they believe that the city won't enforce its zoning regulations. But the city can, and it should. Oklahoma City is a home-ruled city, and zoning is at the essence of local control. ODOT has misread the PUD in this particular location, thought it allowed billboards because it was silent, and granted Lamar relocation permit. Mr. Snoddy touched briefly on this statute. It is a statute that when ODOT has to condemn a billboard for a highway project, that they can provide a relocation site instead of paying fair market value for that condemned billboard, which can be very expensive. But this statute simply allows for wherever this new feasible location will be, that it can be spaced lesser than what state law typically requires, which is 1,000 feet. So this statute simply says, we're going to give you a good location, and it might, we can squeeze it in a little bit closer than what you normally would have to go through that process because you are being relocated. The definition of relocation permit also within this same act only applies to these relocation permits that have been given based on this special spacing. It changes the spacing, it doesn't change the land use. And the Oklahoma City zoning and regulations are not interfering with the intended purpose of this relocation statute. There are many other suitable locations within Oklahoma City for a relocated billboard. Harts for Hearing's south parking lot is not one of those. And there's nothing in this statute that displaces a home-ruled city's power to enforce its regulations. The city has the power and the authority to step in and enforce its zoning regulations in this situation. As we just discussed, there are no billboards on Lake Hefner Parkway, and that's not by accident. We respectfully ask the city to step in, look at this statute, enforce its zoning, and stop the construction of this billboard, which is scheduled to be put up any day now. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. If there's no questions for her, we'll move on to Joanna Trimble-Smith. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address before you begin.
Yes. Hello. I'm Joanna Trimble-Smith, and my address is 11500 North Portland, Oklahoma City, 73120. I am the Executive Director, CEO at Harts for Hearing, and I want you to know that I have the best job in the world. A day doesn't go by that because of newborn hearing screening that became law in our state in 2000, the technology, the incredible technology of cochlear implants and hearing aids, when provided by skilled pediatric audiologists and auditory verbal therapists, we are truly changing lives every day. A baby that's born profoundly deaf can learn to listen and talk and enter kindergarten listening and talking like a typical child without anyone in the classroom even knowing that the child might have a hearing loss, and that's nothing short of miraculous. I work with an incredible group of people, and for those of you who don't know about Harts for Hearing, we serve both pediatric and adult patients, but my primary focus today is on the pediatric population, because we have a window of three years to get it right. And Harts for Hearing has really pressed in. We have the most skilled team of providers, not only in the state, but the region nationally and internationally. We have the key thought leader in the organization. We have, who is actually writing textbooks about the work. We have visitors every day. In fact, this Friday, I've got a group of national leaders that will be spending two days at Harts for Hearing to learn about our work, and I'm very proud of it. We have actually, over, it's an $8 million budget, and we have 65 employees. But one of the things that became very clear to us in our previous location, although we were founded in 2007, in 2010 and 12, we realized we had outgrown our space, and so the organization sought to identify a space that provided the quality of the programs we provided within the building, in the building itself. And we sought out and chose the location on the Northwest Highway, very near Kingsgate School, which we had partnered with for over 20 years at Our Lord's Community Church. We purchased the land, and I can very proudly say that the city stepped up, and we raised $10 million and built a state-of-the-art facility that this community should be very proud of, and I'm humbled to be the leader of the organization. Needless to say, we were very shocked when, on June, August the 14th, I was notified by two elders at the church that the church had sold an easement to Lamar, and that the sign would be going literally 30 yards from our door, 10 feet off the building. I'm concerned about that for four very significant reasons. One of the most important is, because we can identify babies and fit them with hearing technology within the first week of life, we have to use electrophysiological testing equipment that is actually done on the south end of our building, and we often have to run checks to see if there's any electrical artifact. That was never given to me as an option, and truly, it could very significantly impact the outcome of our results. Secondly, we have a group of children who go back and forth between Kingsgate. We play out there. The children are literally, sometimes we walk back and forth. We still have a very tight collaboration with Kingsgate School. It concerns me that that is going to be in the area that we go. Thirdly, I think, is the distraction. It's clearly noted that individuals with hearing loss are often distracted more by visual input. And I will tell you that part of the reason that we selected that location is, we really wanted this to be a place of order, of calm, of light, and of hope, but we very carefully made sure that every detail of that building is to support individuals with hearing loss. And the fact that we are going to perhaps have a sign literally off the property that could be an additional distraction is very concerning to me. Lastly, I office there, I'm there more often than I am at home. Every single day, that's probably a stretch, at least every other day, there is a significant slowdown, and often a wreck, within that location. And I'm very concerned about the fact that a digital billboard will be an added distraction at that point on the Parkway. There are no other signs, and we still have those issues. So thank you for your time. I urge you to consider this, because it is, it's deeply troubling to me.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you shared with the church and/or Lamar that you think the digital billboard that close would affect clinical outcomes of these children?
We did, actually, in a meeting. After the fact, the decision had already been made, and we were told that the steel would be dropped on Saturday, the 8th, which is part of the reason we moved forward so urgently.
The 8th of?
September.
So what was their response to, is there a way to mitigate electrical interference? Were they really concerned? What was their response to?
Really, there wasn't much of a response. It was pretty much, it's happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Just one quick question. How many children do you serve?
We serve currently, right now, children that come weekly, either for hearing aids or ear molds, about 250 children. Over the last year, we served 7,500 children statewide, so.
Thanks for all you do, and thanks for coming down here this morning.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Jerry Johnston Goutro, and I live at 3008 Brownstone Road in Quail Creek. And my father is Jack Johnston, who is the developer of Quail Creek. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about what his vision was. When he bought that land, the first 500 acres in 1959, he was so taken by the beauty of it, and the creeks and the lakes, the trees, that he wanted to do a development that would be consistent with the beauty of the area. And so he went about doing that, and he did things that, back then, were very unusual, like they buried all of their utilities. So there are no electrical lines, no cable lines in the area. They landscaped, carefully landscaped the entrances to the area. They, what else did I? They had sidewalks, they had parks, they had pre-planned areas for churches, and it was just his hope that they were, he was creating a community within a neighborhood. And so he did that for, you know, 40 years. And when, in 1983, my mother and father gave the land to Our Lord's Community Church to build their building, and they did it knowing that it would, that they were members, as I and my family were, and that they would be building a building that would be beautiful and add to the area in which we lived. And so they, they were thrilled with it, that he, my father worked on the building committee, I mean, and it as well as I did after the church was built. So I just want to say that, having spent all those years working on creating a beautiful space for this city, that for it to be marred by a billboard, knowing that there aren't any along the Parkway there, would just be, I think, really devastating for the whole area, for the neighborhood. So I just wanted to say that.
Out of curiosity, do you know how much Lamar would have paid the church for that, for the rights?
You know, I don't know, but someone might know. Do we?
Okay. Thanks.
My guess is someone knows.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Goutro. My address is 3008 Brownstone Road. I'm married to Jerry. So I'm the successor to the predecessor of the developer of Quail Creek. I assure you that Jack would roll over in his grave, if not ascend from the dead, to oppose this unthinkable erection of a digital billboard, not only because it's in Quail Creek neighborhood, but because it's on the land that he donated for the building of a church. I don't, I mean, I don't know what his response would be. He hasn't yet returned. I'm stunned that ODOT slash the state can use a statute to circumvent the scrutiny that should be brought to this by the city, both in terms of zoning and the other requirements that you'd have to prove. To me, this practice runs afoul of any reasonable approach to the fair consideration that should be invoked when evaluating the multitude of factors in determining the impact of such a decision. Please be on notice that Quail Creek Development, and I suspect I could speak for the neighborhood as well, are vehemently opposed to the placement of such a billboard anywhere along the Hefner Parkway. I mean, there is nothing between Northwest Highway and Memorial Road, and I think that's been the case because of a whole lot of agreements that have been made between the city and neighborhoods along the Hefner Parkway. In fact, there was even pushback when it began to become the case that there was going to be restaurants, et cetera, developed along the east shore of Lake Hefner. We have all enjoyed living in Northwest Oklahoma City, driving down the Parkway, enjoying the sunset over Lake Hefner, with no interruption whatsoever by things like billboards. I hope the city council will engage with the city to uphold standard of fairness the citizenry of our great city deserves when it comes to things as important as this. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience. That concludes the people who signed up to speak on item nine Q. Is there any other, anything else to say? I don't believe we've had a motion and a vote yet. I'm going into executive session on this.
Move the item.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that executive session along with item P at the end of the meeting.
We'll handle that executive session along with Item P at the end of the meeting. We do not need an executive session on Item 9R, so we'll proceed to Item 9S1. This is Claims Recommended for Denial. I presume we don't need executive session for this either. But we do have someone who has signed up to speak on Item 9S1J. That is the item Kristen Van Dyke, $1,997.67. This was deferred from August 28th, and Fay Joyce Russell has signed up to speak on the item.
Yes.
Actually, does she mean I?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just an I. My apologies, this is actually in regards to Item S1I. Fay Russell, $3,783.25. And is Fay Joyce Russell? Ah. Would we want to, would you like to keep your seat? We could bring you a microphone if, okay.
I got the letter. This week, it's going to deny my claim. Said I had only submitted one estimate, but there was two, because there was carbon copies of what I submitted. Also, I did not know there was a time limit from when this occurred to when I could file that. It happened in June of 17, and my husband was dying of cancer. He died September 11, 2017. He was sick during those months, right after that happened, and I was his caretaker and could not get out to get away from him, to do estimates and things. I was there 24/7 all the time, taking him to chemo, taking him to radiation, and staying home with him. When he died in September, I got sick. And I was in the hospital from October through February, six different times, with three heart procedures, draining fluid on my lungs and on my heart. And the time just got away from me. I could not physically go and do these things in a timely manner. That's all I got to say.
Well, we don't.
Also, one more thing.
Yeah.
On that application, nowhere does it say, nowhere does it say that you have one year to fill it out.
Do we have anyone who can explain what this is about?
Tina.
Okay, thank you.
The statute of limitations that's contained in the Governmental Court Claims Act requires that any claims against the city be filed within one year of the incident that caused the damage. In this case, her damages are alleged to have happened on June 16, 2017, but the claim was not received until Aug., let's see, August 6 of this year. We are precluded from doing anything about a claim that comes in too late. And the letter that comes with the court claim in the form itself does not specifically say you have a year, but that is state law. I can't remember the last time I've recommended anything for denial based on the fact that they missed the statute of limitations, but that is something we can't, we don't have the discretion to extend.
Let me ask you, or Kenny, I mean, a statute of limitations strikes me as, that's a defense that we can certainly assert. Is it actually limiting us in our ability to respond to a claim?
I'd have to, actually, we'd have to research that if it's a, you want to defer this for two weeks, we can research it.
Seeing some head nods. Plus, the councilperson is not here for Ms. Russell, so.
I would move for. Yeah, well, I would move for a two-week deferral, and I would just throw in, my opinion, we work with the statutes all the time in terms of tax authorities, and unfortunately, you know, they take a pretty hard stance, even when there's extenuating circumstances such as there is in this particular situation. If we do have the ability, I would be inclined to not let the statutes limit our ability to address this claim. If the facts warrant payment, I would certainly encourage it if we have that ability. Again.
If we have any leeway at all, any ability, I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second.
I think we need to have that on whatever form we're talking about, too, that it, that we need to file it within a year. I don't know what form we're, if it does, if it's on there, I mean.
It's the claim form.
If we are capable of adding that in there, a little bit more instructions. I think that's good.
I think that we didn't, she noticed that, that at one point in time, I sent a letter out before I realized that the statute of limitations had run on this claim, asking for a second estimate. We have one, generally, we ask for two. I also did not go so far as to confirm that that car was there on that date. Was it, were you driving the car?
I was driving the car.
What's his name?
Daniel Kekke.
I'm sorry.
We can check on all that.
Maybe, yeah, we can follow up on all that investigation. There might have been.
And two, the estimates was submitted.
Yeah, there's no need for this right now. We'll do the motion, and then you guys can work it out.
Right.
It may not be possible to get this done and make the.
Then we'll defer it next time.
Okay.
We can defer again.
Okay.
Thank you. It's always possible. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Russell. If you could work with our team, and we're going to try to help you out, but this means it's not being denied today.
You want?
It means you are not being denied today. So you now have, we're going to research both the legal issue of whether we can, in fact, pay you, and then research the facts and make sure that it's a viable claim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, all the things was submitted.
Got it.
Two estimates.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that leaves us with the other items under 9S1, and other than I. And we have no one else who signed up to speak, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Motion in a second. And any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 10A1, Claims Recommended for Approval. I presume we do not need executive session. I do not see anyone having signed up. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Which brings us at 12:35 to items from council. We'll start down here.
Neighborhood night outs tonight, so encourage everybody to get out to their neighborhood event.
Indeed. I'll be making a few.
Mr. Davis, are you here? A citizen to be heard?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we've got her down. Okay, City Manager Reports, Item 12.
Well, we're going to do quickly, my carrier is here to give us a quick presentation on CVB. I've asked that we not do the presentation on priorities today, and the other three reports are there for council review.
You know, at the end of every episode of Jimmy Kimmel, he says, "We're sorry, Matt Damon, we had to bump you." That's what this presentation, Item B, is becoming.
Yes.
Just so you know. Okay, Mike, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here, and I will be quick. We obviously end our year, the end of June, same fiscal calendar that the city is on. We had a good year this year, not a great year. Obviously, the groundbreaking for the new convention center was kind of a capstone to the, to the year, and I will tell you that since that occurred, and then since the signing of the final contract agreements by Omni, business has certainly picked up. We were in Salt Lake City when that occurred, and it was, it was well-received by over 2,000 meeting planners that heard the news about the Omni contract being signed. So we see some good things. That is shown largely in the sales leads room nights that we generated this year, 22% above our goal, 464,000 lead room nights generated. Many of those are for the new convention center in Omni, and we could not act on those until after Omni had finished signing all the agreements. But they have been very cooperative with us in working toward that goal, and so we will begin to see the fruits of those labors coming in very shortly. Terms of future room nights, last year, we were below our goal. The challenge we are seeing, number one, is people wanting to wait until the new convention center project is done. Number two is a lot of the business we have been going after the last year to 18 months is business that's too large for what we have now, so they have to wait. And last, but certainly not least, is the desire to be in a new facility as opposed to the facility we have now. So we will continue to work to fill the existing building in the short term to the best of our ability, and have a group in town today looking around for a meeting that is going to be here next year and making their plans. In terms of servicing groups, 263, we had a goal of 280. Again, a little bit of evidence of some slowing of business in our existing facilities, but we are still bringing in some high-end groups like the Baptists that came here in June, and Councilman Reverend Cooper, so can vouch for what those folks saw while they were here, and the reception they received in the city of Oklahoma City. We're very proud of all the great things that were done and the way that that convention came off during its run here. Tourism sales, we had some significant increase in numbers. We have been able to gather more international information than we've ever been able to get in the past. We're working in conjunction with the state of Oklahoma and the state of Kansas on tour groups. This has allowed us to get better information and more information through U.S. Travel and also the State Department, through some of the travel records of people that are coming into the country, when you have to fill out the vouchers as you fly into a country, either going or coming. And so this year, we had a significant increase in group tours out of Europe, and that's where the major part of this increase has come. Those folks tend to take holiday, which means they're on vacation for a month, and they go places from Europe like America, spend a lot of money and a lot of time, and we are on the beaten path for a number of those. And even today, as we speak, our VP of Tourism is in England for an annual visit that we do to Europe. This year, it's England and Ireland, selling Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, as part of a tour with the Route 44. Booked passengers, almost 43,000 passengers, 56% above our goal. That's a significant number, and the increase there is almost entirely international traffic that we're now able to track, that we've not had the luxury of being able to track in past years, but we can now, and so certainly shows a significant growth for us. We expect to see that for years to come. Obviously, things like the Indian Cultural Center are going to produce some, we think, outstanding opportunities for us, so we're excited to see that gearing back up. Booked room nights and group business, again, 95% above our goal. We are seeing some outstanding business coming in there, and it certainly warrants the activity that we do. Equine Events was a good year. Our numbers were down slightly. We lost two small shows. One of them moved to Ardmore because the size of their show had declined, and the cost of operating their show here were excessive for what they could afford. Second show, that just went away. The show actually collapsed, and so we lost that this year, but we do have some fish in the sea that we're looking at right now. Kind of hard to talk about horses in the sea, but we are looking at some other horse shows that we can potentially bring in to replace those. So we're very happy, and the shows that we did hold were good shows. They were very pleased here, very happy to be here, and we think some promising things this year. Marketing and communications, obviously, the website visits, digital media continues to be extremely strong and valuable to us. 4% gain on goal for website visits. Our social media, I believe, Pitch Stories. Pitch Stories is travel bloggers that are doing stories on all the different social media channels. 480% of goal. This is something that is kind of remarkable because we're seeing it continue to grow, and it's, people still don't really grasp how you make money doing this kind of stuff. We don't make money. The people that write the stories do, and trying to figure out how they do that, but we're excited about it, and it gives us some great opportunities, especially with all the great things that are happening. Overall, we had a good year. Hotel motel tax collections up 7.5%. Just got the latest information through two months of this year. We're up another, we're still up 7.5% for the new fiscal year, just as we ended last year. So we're seeing some good things happening. We always talk about what's happening with new hotel development. We are seeing a little bit of slowing right now. Some of the developers are backing off from the immediacy of building. They're not canceling projects, but they are postponing them and pushing their opening dates a little bit out. We think that's probably not a bad idea, to be able to absorb rooms that open up before you start building more. Smith Travel released data about two weeks ago. Out of around 100 hotel projects in the state of Oklahoma, 70 of them are in the Oklahoma City metro area. The remainder of the state, Tulsa and everywhere else, had about 30 projects total. So, you know, it's heavy here, and so backing off from that a little bit is not necessarily a bad thing as we move forward. And so, with the other projects that are coming on, so that we have activities for people to do when they come to occupy our hotels, we'll continue seeing that grow. As always, we appreciate your all's support and help from council, from staff. This is an easy place to work, and it's a great place to be, and I continue to be very proud to serve as president of the Bureau and have a great team around us, and appreciate your all's support and help. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Mike, any questions for Mike?
Thank you.
They're a little hungry, Mike. I'm sorry. All right, so you're deferring Item B.
Yes.
And then, is there anything to say about?
No, just, we have to answer any questions.
Okay, and there's written reports on Items C, D, and E.
That's correct.
At the website, under our, under our agenda at OKC.gov. We do have a couple citizens to be heard, and then we'll go into executive session. Then, Ms. Davis. Couldn't read your handwriting. But please, when you, when you get up here, properly pronounce your full name and your address. We'd love to hear from you.
Good afternoon.
He's the fine president of JFK.
The divine president.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Denovetta Davis, Denovetta Davis. 721 North Kellum, Oklahoma City, 73117. So I'm here representing the JFK Neighborhood Association. In 2014, I stood before you and asked for your help in stopping the explosions caused from the, I think it's called the Richard Bach Recycling Plant on Reno. From our understanding, they've been leaving gasoline in the tanks when they crush the cars, and it causes an explosion, and it's been rocking our neighborhood for years. So I'm here again to ask for your help. It's continued to occur. You approved an amendment to the International Fire Code back in 2014, and so it's still happening. And we have been tracking it, and we have been reporting it to the Action Center all that time. And when we reported last month to the Action Center, we received an email that they were no longer accepting our complaints because there were no violations, and of course, no violations, no enforcement. So we started gathering information, and all the information and tracking that we had done, and we put it in a report, and we talked with our councilman, Councilman Cooper. He's been very gracious and helpful. And he set up a meeting with the Director of Code Enforcement and the Deputy Chief of the. and the Deputy Chief of the Fire Marshal. And we presented that report to them. And the Fire Marshal confirmed that the Action Center was no longer accepting our complaints. And so, you know, we were kind of lost there. We didn't really know what to do. But we have been, for years, we've just been the only neighborhood that's been affected. We've been coming to the council meetings and reporting it. So it is also affecting, impacting our neighbors to the north, which is Cobus and East Highland neighborhood. And also our neighbors to the south, which is Harrison Walnut. There's some churches and a few homes still there. We also found out that the Oklahoma Housing Authority had been tracking this, these explosions, since 2012. And so we compiled all this information. We've also talked to some of the businesses on Reno. And many of them are owned by corporations. And so unless they get corporation permission, they cannot, you know, agree to... They're hearing it, they're feeling it. But unless they get information, I mean, approval from corporations, they cannot say that they support what's, you know, our efforts. But there is one business owner that has agreed to support us because he feels it, and the people in his hotel feel it every day. He owns a truck stop in the Comfort Suites Hotel. And so we do have others that, not just JFK now. There are others who are experiencing this. And so we are asking again for your help. It is just, neighbors are frustrated, they're angry. We're seeing structural damage, both exterior and exterior. And we just don't know what to do. We are... We're coming to you again for help. Now, we've had a meeting, as I said, with Councilman Cooper. He's been very gracious and helpful. And another meeting is scheduled later on this month with the Standard Recycling Company, the Richenbach, I guess representatives from that, from the recycling plant, the Councilman and some others. And so we will report back to you what's happening. But we're here for help.
So what are our options?
Actually, the Councilman may know a little bit more about this than I do. We've obviously had this issue for a few years. We've responded and dealt with it. But I don't know recently what's happened.
Well, the real challenge is they've been gathering now information for how many years?
Oh, five, seven years. A long time.
That they've been gathering this information. When the car crushing brand, I assume crushes gas tanks or something that is left, it literally shakes their home. And it's been an ongoing problem even now. And so I see fires here. So they may have some updated information about where we are with this. Unfortunately, this is one of the plants that has been operating in our city for years. And, you know, it's just a bad location in terms of what we would like to see happen in that area. I'm sure Entertainment District would like to expand with zip lines. And then we've got this wonderful presentation today from the Indian Cultural Center, which is just across the river. And so there's some real challenges, I think, ahead of the city about what needs to happen with all of this.
Yes, just a real quick update. Chief Thompson is working with Development Services. So we can look at this. I know we have a meeting that's coming up with one of the companies there on Reno. This has been an ongoing issue because it becomes a noise ordinance. So it's very difficult for fire to deal with that issue. But we want to make sure that we're involved to try to address those issues. And I'll talk with you afterward just to make sure that we continue this process, to see what we can do. But I am aware that Chief Thompson is working on that, our Fire Marshal, to try to continue this process, to see if we can help in any way.
Here's one of the things, is that these booms are occurring at times at 5:00 in the morning. And that is just, you know, not acceptable. I don't care where you live in these United States. And the reason some of that is happening is that, from my understanding, is that they've been given a special use permit that allows them to begin operations. Rather than at 7:00 in the morning, these operations are starting at 5:00 in the morning. And they're able to run for 10 hours, I think, until 3:00 in the afternoon. Well, if the city's going to allow people and allow this to happen at 5:00 a.m. in the morning, then that's a real... That's a real problem that needs to be addressed with us as a city. If it happens at 8:00 in the morning, that would be something different than 5:00 in the morning. Every time, even with fire, you know, if they go out there, there's no time at which these booms happen. It's just when they crush a car or something at a particular point, at a particular time. When they do it, you know, it can be 5:00 in the morning. It can be, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon. They can't just sit out there. I think they've even set out, as I understood, trying to be there when an actual boom occurs and have spent hours doing that. But that's not something that happens every day or consistently on an ongoing basis, like every now and then. But if it's, you know, it's happening at 5:00 in the morning, that's a problem.
And it feels like we're in a water zone, you know, like somebody's kicking in your door. It's just real loud. It's just scary because you're about your business in your home. And it just happens, and it's scary.
I mean, I've felt them. It feels like military-grade explosions. I work right next to Fort Sill, where they fire artillery all day. And it is, it's very similar. And it's ridiculous. The other thing I've seen when they go off is that there's debris that goes through the neighborhood. And there's no telling what toxins kids and neighbors are breathing in as this debris is spread out through the neighborhood. So I guess the questions I would have is... Because we've had all these discussions for years, like you said, back in 2014 and many other times. I mean, have we done, like, decibel level counts? Does the city have the capacity to just put something up there and measure how many decibels is being produced noise-wise? I don't have the answer to that. I don't know. I mean, if we haven't done that, we should do that. We should put it right by the facility.
They have meters, Councilman. They have meters. But they have to be manned. So that someone has to be there at that time when this happens. Same thing with the air quality issues. Someone has to be there when this happens.
We received a report from DEQ on the 23rd. I think they checked the air quality and for the explosions. And they said they didn't hear anything or, you know, find any problems with air quality. That was just one day, one time. And so they closed the complaint. So it's my understanding that the recycling plant has those decimeters. And they are not, for some reason, they're reporting that they're not feeling, experiencing what we're feeling, and it's right there, so.
Well, would you agree with the contention that it's the fuel in the gas tank of the vehicle that's causing the explosion?
I know that's a discussion of what they believe it is, but I can't confirm that that's what's taking place. That's what my understanding was, that the gasoline, when they crush the cars in the tanks, is left over.
If that's the... I mean, and I don't know that it is. But if that's the sole cause, well, why can't we address that? Either we take off the... I don't know. Can you take off the gas tank? Can you drain it? Can you mandate that?
I believe that's... And I don't want to speak without knowing fully on that. I can check into it. But I believe that's the understanding they're supposed to have that taken care of before it's crushed.
Well, Richenbach also has a recycling plant in Houston. And they had the same issue. And they had to spend lots of money. I think they put a wall to protect the residents from the noise and the pollution. So the same problem has occurred in another city.
And but they had mitigating... They found a way to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood.
That's my understanding from the article that we put in our report. And all of you should have a copy of that report. I sent it to you.
Sent it by email?
Yes.
Chief, they ask, this is a rather simple question, but the more fuel, if that is the case for the explosion, the louder, the more, the greater force of an explosion. Is that a fair statement to make?
Sometimes I'm brewing... There's a lot of variables that come into play with that. So sometimes, actually, with, if you have more fuel, it's too rich to create the explosion. So sometimes it's a variable. It has to be that right mixture.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
And in addition, it also could be propane, you know? Tanks that are also being crushed, okay? So I think there are several things that, you know, are concerned. But the city and the Fire Department has allowed, by special permit, for them to operate at 5:00 in the morning. And that's a problem.
Well, I think for sure we ought to look at the hour issue. We ought to look at mitigation issues. And then I don't know if there's a point where the use is just so incompatible with the area that I don't know what our options are. But we shouldn't look at whether this is even, you know, something we shouldn't change zoning. I don't know how that grandfathering works. I should...
Well, that would be a taking if we chose to do that. And I don't know about the special use permit. Generally, special use permits are granted by council. But let me... We'll need to find out what the status of that is or where that came from or what our options are along that line.
Well, we're not trying to run anybody out of business. But that's not our goal. We just want the explosions to stop. And so that our quality of life is just like the rest of the city.
Okay. Well, we'll keep working on it. And I have your presentation, and it was helpful.
Thank you.
Because I didn't have the institutional knowledge. Thank you. Jeremy Moses. And we'll get you a mic here. Welcome back, Jeremy.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Moses. I live at 12205 Southwestern Avenue, Apartment 1212, Unit in Ward 5, 73170. I just wanted to speak on the website. I know that the agendas are all available online. And you have access... There's access to the... There's supposed to be access to videos of previous meetings of different boards. I found that apparently they don't work anymore. The video links don't work anymore. Looks like they're using Windows Media. I don't know what needs to be done to fix that. But I would think that would be something that should be fixed for transparency. I know, of course, that the city council meetings are available on YouTube. But this is for, like, other boards, like COTBA and the like. So just wanted to comment on that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And it looks like we've got Zach Nash stepping in front of the camera to answer this question.
Mayor, Council, Zach Nash, Public Information and Marketing. And city clerk and public information are aware of this issue. It's this old technology of our agenda management system. And the last couple of council meetings, you approved the city clerk to negotiate with a possible new vendor for agenda management that would, if we implement that software, will be compatible on mobile and mobile devices and tablets, which is why we put... A couple of years ago, we moved our stream to YouTube so people could watch on a smartphone or tablet. Not all of our meetings are archived there. But we are aware that that is an issue. You have to be on a PC, Windows device, to view those archived meetings. But we are working on, kind of moving forward on technology, and hopefully we'll get there soon.
And actually, I just, I noticed that...
We don't want people watching this video to not hear you.
Right. I also, I actually did try to do it on a PC and had problems with that as well.
Well, I'll talk to you after this, and we'll see what operating system, everything that you're on, and see what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
I've also had problems on both a PC and an Apple for many, many years. And I was relieved when I went to YouTube. Are there... Can we move other meetings, other than city council, to YouTube in the interim until we have a fix?
We can look at that and try to put all of our televised meetings on there. Some of the new technologies that the clerk's office and the city's looking at is looking at using YouTube for an archive service. But, you know, we'd always want to host those on our own for long term. But it could be something we look into.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Jeremy. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard, at least those who signed up. Seeing no one else who wishes to speak, we will go to executive session, handle Items 9P and 9Q. We'll be back.